11th, and it's the Planning Board meeting of the City of Jersey City. At this time, I would like to ask for the sunshine announcement.
Okay, good evening Chair, good evening everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on June 7th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you Cam. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to join me at Pledge of Allegiance. Cam, can we have the roll call, please?
Okay, so we'll start with the Acting Chair, Gangadin.
Here.
And Acting Vice Chair, Green.
Present.
And Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
And Commissioner Stomato.
Here.
All right, we have five commissioners present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we swear into staff, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Cam, is there any new correspondence?
Yes, we have one item that is requesting to carry with preservation of notice to July 9th, and that item is the very last item on the agenda. It is item 20, case P2023-0056. The address associated with this item is 44 Park Lane North. It's for a preliminary major site plan with C variances, and they have again requested to carry with preservation of notice to July 9th. And I think we have an additional request coming right now.
Let's hear from counsel, and then we'll go through the ones posted on the agenda.
Sure, good. Good evening, so I represent number 18 and 19 on the agenda. This is case P2023-0060, 269 MLK Drive, and P2023-0085155 Newark Avenue. And the applicant is requesting on each of those to carry to the next available hearing date.
All right, so for purposes of the record, that is Attorney Stephen Joseph on behalf of the applicants at case number 18, P2023-0060, and case number 19 on the agenda, case P2023-0085. Cam, do we have a date that we can carry that to?
So as a matter of practice, at this point, because of the backlog, for folks who are carrying from one meeting, we're asking them to carry two meetings out. So that next meeting would be July 9th.
Understood.
July 9th it is, and counsel, you request to carry to July 9th, and you agree to waive any time through the board.
Of course, yes.
Thank you counsel.
Thank you.
Do you have other matters? Will we see you again this evening?
You will see me again this evening.
Awesome. Thank you counsel.
Okay.
Those in attendance, let's go through the adjournments that were listed on the agenda. Want me to read them, Cam, or you want to read them?
I think, I think you did a great job last night.
All right, so these cases are adjourned, and they are carried primarily to June 25th, but we will identify when they're carried to. So if you are here on 72 Tunnelley Avenue, that's case P2023-035, that matter is not going to be heard tonight. It will be heard on June 25th. There will be no further notice if you receive notice. If you're here on case P2023-0053, 675 to 695 Grand Street, that case is being carried to June 25th, there'll be no further notice. If you're here on case P2023-00123, Second Street, that case is being carried to the July 9th meeting. There will be no further notice of that application. Case P2023-0009, 85 to 87 Monitor Street, if you're here on that case, that case is being carried to July 9th. There'll be no further notice. Case P2024-0058, 780 to 782 Newark Avenue, that case is being carried to July 9th, no further notice. And case P2023-0039, 215 Van Vorst, that case is being carried to July 9th with no further notice. So if you're here on any of those cases, they are being carried to the date identified. There'll be no further notice. You can stay, you do not have to stay, and we thank everybody for coming out. Madam Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Cam, is there anything else?
Just last thing, for the record, we marked into evidence the sunshine announcement. As B1.
Thank you. At this time, I'll work on new business. I would like to call on case P2023-0068, which is the review and discussion of amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan regarding the inclusion of a mandatory affordable housing requirement authorized by City Council Resolution 24-362. Formal action may be taken. Our review planner is Tanya Marion.
Counsel and Chair, I just want to make sure that it's noted for the record that we did notice the county. The proof of that is on the data portal underneath the application.
Thank you Director. We're going to mark that as B1 in regard to case P2023-0068, the review and discussion of the amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan.
Thank you. I believe the councilman wanted to speak on the, before I go any further.
I appreciate the work the Journal Square Task Force and the Planning Department has done together with me and my office. The Planning Department has been very mindful of my original goals and the community's goals for affordable housing. They have drafted several versions of the amendments and made changes up to and including yesterday. However, perhaps because of the timeframe, their committed to planning has been unable to meet with me to present their final changes and provide details on their rationale. I appreciate the time that went into this and understand how important it is to the community. I also recognize that while it is difficult to appease everyone, legislation shouldn't be rushed, especially when it is this impactful. It is important that we get the right, we get it right, so everyone may benefit from this. As all of the members of the Planning Board understand, you have a tough job when it comes to zoning and determining the future development of our city. Therefore, you can appreciate the necessity to ensure we present the best plan possible for all future development and residents to benefit from. While this plan is directed at Ward C, the benefits of the affordable housing will extend to all members of Jersey City. Therefore, I am asking that the Planning Board carry this item to the next Planning Board meeting on June 25th so that I can meet with City Planning and review their final changes in order to ensure they meet the original intent of my legislation and will be the most beneficial to the City of Jersey City and the residents of Ward C. I am also asking that the Planning Board recommendations be heard at the City Council meeting on June 26th as planned, and I will ensure that I advise the council on the latest changes from planning and my office, so everyone will have the proper time to consider the plan. All right, that's one issue. I have something else here. The Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association has contacted me because the person that was supposed to be here couldn't be present, and they asked me to read a statement for them, for the Lincoln Park Association.
So councilman, before you go ahead and read that, I think we do have to address some of the legalities of the action, so. I don't know at this point that it would be proper for the statement regarding any association or any member of the public. We haven't heard and discussed the amendments to the Journal Square redevelopment plan yet. So I understand your position as to the request that the matter be carried. So Madam Chair, members of the board, obviously, this body is governed by the statute. The reason this is before us is because it came from the council on a resolution that the board look at the proposed amendments and make recommendations back to the council. The council will determine whether or not to adopt amendments or not adopt amendments. This body just reviews what's put in front of it and makes its recommendations under the MLUL. Right. There is a very strict timeline to do that. It's 45 days from when it was sent to us, and we have to act. So there is nothing in the law that permits us to adjourn the matter to a later date outside of the 45 days.
Right. And that's why it has to come back on June 25th or 26th. And the reason for the postponement is.
Has to come back where?
Back to the council and the Planning Board. We just found out about changes yesterday afternoon. That's why we had to ask for a postponement. I spoke to Tanya, and we agreed to postpone it. We have to sit down and talk about the changes that were made. Because I wasn't aware of them, nobody contacted us. We contacted Planning a couple of times, and they didn't get back to us, and then we find out there's changes. So, but it should be presented on June 25th to the Planning Board.
But that's outside the 45 day period.
Oh, it's not. Right, Tanya?
Unfortunately, it is. June 22nd is a 44 day, 45 day.
Right. So there's no opportunity to carry it to the 25th. It's got to be heard before June 22nd.
A couple of questions. So as far as amending it, let's say passes today, comes back to the council. If we were to amend it in the council, would it have to go back to Planning again, or does it?
So I want to be very clear for everybody here.
I just want to.
This body does not pass legislation.
I understand.
The council passes the legislation, right?
Would it have, would our amendments need to go through another review?
No.
Okay, so we could amend it.
Not from this body.
Okay, that's fine. So we could amend it at the council meeting if we want to.
That is where it will get addressed, right? You get our recommendations, and then the council will act. The council is free to do what the council does.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on the process and, you know.
Absolutely.
Got it. I appreciate you Santo, thank you.
What do you want to do?
Thank you, councilman.
Tanya, what do you want to do?
Let's set up a meeting. Okay.
So I think, quite frankly, councilman, we have to hear what was proposed, what Planning's position is, and then the board will send their recommendations to the council, and the council will wrestle with or deal with those recommendations up, down, left or right. And if the council does not want to take all of the recommendations or wants to change the ordinance, that's the council's prerogative.
Okay. And we just want to meet with you, Director. I don't know, just want to make sure we're all clear and before, well, after, I guess, tonight we'll meet. If that's okay with you.
All right.
I have no problem meeting with anybody, ever. But I don't know what the purpose would be after that. After the board makes its, to meet about this, I don't know what the purpose would be after the board makes its recommendation.
All right, Tanya, we have to.
We'll sidebar with you on what the concerns are.
I have never a problem meeting with anybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Tanya, I have to know, and we have to know what the other changes were, all right? So if you want to go ahead with it, go ahead with it, and we'll take it back to the council, and we'll see what we do, all right?
Well, but that's, that's all going to get laid out right now. Whatever recommendations there are, we're about to have the public hearing on that. So we allowed you, as the councilman, to come up and address the board before we even began the hearing. But we're going to go through what was proposed, what the Planning Department's position is with respect to that, all under the MLUL. And then this body will decide what recommendation they want to send back to the council. And then the council will ultimately adopt the legislation that the council thinks is best for everybody.
Tanya, you sure the 45 days is up? Because we spoke yesterday.
Yeah, the 45 days is 22nd.
Oh, Christ. I'll tell you, this has gone on for six months, and to be honest with you, I'm tired of it. I want it done, we need affordable housing. The people in Journal Square want it, the people of Jersey City want it. And it's got to be taken care of, all right?
We're going to do it, we got it done.
All right. I got a, I got a thing from the Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association, because.
We do have to save that for the public portion of the meeting.
All right. All right.
Councilman, that is on a, it's on a different application.
Oh, then that's got to be during that application.
Is there a way for you to pass it to, I mean, I don't want to.
All right.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Tanya, can you proceed, please?
Okay, so unfortunately for you, there's a document with a lot of words. And unlike my students, I use 11 point font, and I don't double space. So we get some procedural history, though. If, it feels like deja vu, it a little bit is. Actually, I don't know if it ever made it to the Planning Board after the first City Council resolution was passed in October of 2023. I do believe that City Planning provided a recommendation to that resolution, and then it was pulled by the City Council. So this is the, I guess, second chance or shot at this from the City Council. The City Council did approve the resolution at the, at the May 8, 2024. Sending the document before you, which is in your, in your data portal, the ordinance was attached to that resolution. What City Planning then did was we took that resolution, that ordinance. So what we can review, just so it's clear for everybody, is pretty narrow, right? If the City Council says and sends something, and they say, we want you to review affordable housing, well, then I can look at a million things. But if the City Council sends something that's very finite, like an ordinance, then that's what I have to review and comment on. So we did an analysis. We used a methodology that was explained in the memo. I'm not going to go too in depth for it. Liz Oprah from our office was really the one who did it. And so if we go through this, and you do have more questions, we can ask her to explain that to you and walk you through it. But more importantly, let's highlight some of the things that Councilman Bogiano's proposal has, right? So it is a mandatory affordable housing ordinance. The trigger, so to speak, right, is 30 units. The second you have 30 units in your building, you are required to do affordable housing. It matches the inclusionary zoning tier map. So majority, if not all, I think there may be one area, is 10%, right? And that's 10% of the whole. So it's not going to be 10% of, well, we'll get into that in a second. Part of the councilman's proposal included what we're calling accommodations, which just means that if you're required to do an affordable housing unit, there's an accommodation for you to be able to have some market rate unit to offset that affordable unit. So why did we do that, right? We did that because case law has defined very clearly that you have to have a compensatory benefit. And that's just kind of like fancy words to say that if a municipality is going to require affordable housing, that municipality has to give the developer the ability to kind of build it. You can't just kind of make them do it. You have to also allow them to offset the requirement. So the accommodations within the councilman's proposal, just so we're looking on your, on your screen, are based on units. And whether or not, that's the units that are required, right? So it's 10% at 30. At 30 units, I'm required to do 10%. 10% is three units, that's three affordable units on site. The allowance for extra accommodation is one story. Are we all kind of on the same page? I just want to make sure. I, I'm not saying that nobody knows what I'm talking about, but I just want to make sure we're all kind of on the same page together.
Tanya, to be clear, if the requirement is three affordable units, the allowance under the councilman's proposal is an additional story?
Yes.
And then four to six, an additional two stories, seven to nine, an additional three stories, 10 to 19, an additional four stories, 20 or more, five stories.
Correct.
Okay.
Some exemptions within the councilman's proposal is Zone 4, 4A. Those are the green zones, if you're thinking about the map that surrounds Zone 3. So the core is Zone 1. Zone 2 is really nothing, it's air rights. Zone 3 are those yellow ones that are kind of the soft transition zones from the core to the, to the, pretty much the residential areas. So Zone 4, for the most part, is a six-story zone. Zone 6, which is our preservation zone, 9, 10, 11, and 12, which are very site-specific, either based on settlements or very specific plan amendments that have their own bonuses and requirements attached to them.
So exempt means no affordable.
That's correct. So Planning took a look at this to see basically would it work, right? And there were a couple of issues that we came up with. The first issue is that the, the 10% is going to be required for the total. So even if you get another story, and that's probably not just going to get you to 33 units, it might get you to 37 units, it might get you to 40 units, and now your requirement continues to go up to four units or five units. But it's not apples to apples. So because UHAC, Uniform Housing, I should probably know what this is at this point. I just keep saying UHAC all of the time. The UHAC, our 188, which is our affordable housing, requires us to use UHAC standards, which is a state requirement. And those state requirements determine the amount, the type of bedroom account, right? So if you have a requirement, you're going to have a certain percentage that's required to be three units, you're going to have a certain percentage, two, one, studios, and so on. So if you're required to do an affordable unit, it could be a three bedroom unit, and it could be at a median income of 30 or 50% below, and the market that you might be able to fit or build out from that could be a studio. So do you see what I'm saying in the sense that it's not apples to apples? You're not building a three unit because you're required to, and then doing a three-unit market rate off-site, onsite, if that makes any sense. So.
Because of size of unit.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And so the second variable to that is lot size. So if you are just getting a story, or you're getting two stories, this kind of, if you, if you're getting a story or two stories, and you have a larger site, it's going to be easy for you to accommodate that, and you're going to be able to build more market rate, or your ratio to market to affordable might be better. And if you're on a smaller site, it'd probably be difficult for you to actually build to offset your requirement on a smaller site. So it kind of basically is a static accommodation, and it kind of makes winners and losers, essentially, right? A bigger site is going to be able to kind of accommodate this and do, deal with it, and a smaller site is probably going to be hurt from it. So because Journal Square is done not with density or anything like that, it's really done for square footage. We thought the easiest and the most equitable way to do an accommodation is by square footage. And that's to say that for every unit that you're required, and you can get an additional square footage of, of, you can get additional square footage based on your base zoning, right? So the 5,000 square feet is what we were able to come up with, and that's based on a couple of things. One is that we usually average out, when we're doing our studies, 1,000 square feet for a unit. And I know that maybe that sounds generous, or maybe that sounds too low, but as the Planning Board, I know at this point you've seen units that are 250 square units, and you've seen units that are 1,600 square units. So 900 to 1,000 is usually what works for us when we're doing that. 20% of it accounts for stairs and hallways and all of those things. So with the 5,000 square feet, so if you have one unit that's required, you get 5,000 square feet, and an additional 250 square feet for an amenity. That's completely separate. Just so, I didn't even really want to bring it up, but the way our redevelopment plan has is that a certain square footage is required for amenity space, so we just wanted to make sure that that was consistent. So let's just kind of just focus on the 5,000 if we can. Based on the study, we did sites that were already approved or under construction as, as existing, and we were able to replicate the types of floors, like the types of units that were already laid out. And using the 5,000 square footage, we were able to average about three market rates to one. So that was really a much more equitable way to kind of address the accommodation. In that, we found that, like I said, we have an average of three, so some of them were actually up to six, and some of them were as low as two. Two market to one affordable. Doing that, we were able to actually create more affordable housing because we weren't capping it by stories. But we did find that a reasonable cap, and that was kind of just based on the analysis that we did. In other words, how much height you would actually need to kind of create that balance, that three to one balance. And we thought, we assumed that 20 stories extra was sufficient to do that. It doesn't mean that every site gets an additional 20 stories. Some sites may need five stories to balance out their affordable requirement. Some sites may need eight. 20 is a cap. It is not just a, it's not a blanket, you get an extra 20 stories, it's a cap.
So Tanya, under the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan today, it is dealt with in terms of square footage.
Correct.
And that's kind of how we plan in the city generally, correct? And then, when you apply that in this scenario, well, strike that. The reason why the city is laid out and planned that way is because all these sites are different in terms of their size, shape, and location, and therefore, this provides the opportunity to ensure that the units are actually able to be accommodated by the various lots versus the larger lots being developed and the smaller lots not being able to absorb any of it, and therefore, don't get developed.
That's absolutely correct. So our recommendation really is to use the square footage as an accommodation. Based on our analysis, that's what worked. That's what was able to create the new affordable housing and to not actually create an impediment. Based on our analysis, we think that the limit of stories would actually disincentivize, and you might have a, a lot of developments that are just stopping at 29 units because the flexibility in the accommodation isn't enough. So you might just have a bunch of buildings that will cap out at 29, so they don't have to have that requirement, because we've made it infeasible. We're going to talk about the floor amendment that we, we produced yesterday. Matt's really going to talk a lot more about that. So the councilman's exemptions were for Zone 4 and Zone 4A. Our original suggestion was then to exempt 5, 7, and 8. 5 is Newark Avenue. 7 is what we call the Arts Deco, and 8 is Bergen Square. So 5, 7, and 8 are actually more on the periphery of the plan. They're further out from the core than Zone 4, right? Just kind of thinking about it. 1, 2, 3, 4, in that sense, right? So our recommendation for consistency. So our recommendation for consistency, so we weren't being arbitrary in saying the zone that's actually closer to the core is exempt, but the zone that's further away from the core is not exempt. We recommended removing Zone 5, 7, and 8 for consistency. Based on a lot of feedback that we got, not just from community but from council members, we wanted to address the fact that the council may not agree with our exemptions. And so, in the instance that they do not agree with our additional exemptions, these were our recommendations. Our recommendations would then be to have no exemptions. So it was kind of either you're an all-in or you're an all-out. And that was for mainly and primarily consistency, right? Again, because it's, Zone 4 is really just on that periphery, and 5, 7, and 8 are all the way on the outside. So it doesn't make sense and it's a little bit arbitrary to do ones that are further and closer to the lower density than ones that are actually closer to the core where you want that increased density. Our recommendations, Matt will go through the floor amendment because you've probably not seen it because we just put it out yesterday. So our recommendations are for you to adopt or to look at, to, yes, we're recommending that you adopt our revised amendment. And primarily because, in order to keep it clean based on all of the conditions that we were recommending, we just proposed a different amendment. There is, it's, I'm going to go through some of the things that are, like, generally right now, right? So the first thing, the obvious one, are the accommodations, right? We're recommending square footage instead of stories. Some of the language in the councilman's proposal are repetitive, so they'll bring in the standards that are in Chapter 187 and Chapter 188. It's just not necessary, right? It's just a lot of additional language that doesn't need to be there. All you need to do is cite Chapter 187, Chapter 188, and that cleans it up. We thought that they should add back in the payment. So if you have a fractional requirement, right? So we round up. So if you've got 4.5, you have to do 5. But if you have 4.4, you have to do just still the 4. In our inclusionary zoning and affordable housing, we have a payment attached to that. And so it becomes 0.4% of $180,000, which fair share housing has decided or determined that that's a reasonable cost for a unit, for building or constructing affordable unit. So we recommend that that payment be put back into this ordinance. It doesn't, it's not a payment in lieu, it's a payment for the fractional difference, if that makes any sense. So you'll still have to do the four units, and then you'll have to pay that fractional requirement.
So that actually makes it so that that 0.4% of a unit isn't totally lost by the city?
Correct. And some other things, because we're looking at Zone 3, we think language needs to be cleaned up in the tower and the vase, especially based on some of the changes that you guys adopted in the land development ordinance with how we define lots. So I'm going to let Matt go through the presentation, which will, I think, give a better view on what we're talking about. And that's it for my part. I'm going to let Matt kind of do the funner stuff.
All right. Why don't we have Matt give us the information he's going to give us? But I just want to remind, the board hears me say this all the time for those members of the public that are here tonight. The charge of this board is to look at what's proposed and how is it consistent with what is happening in the planning laws here in the city? Specifically, the master plan and the other zoning ordinances here in the city. Consistency is what our charge is, and where it's not consistent, that's what we have to tell the council. Council, this isn't consistent, what you're doing in this ordinance, in this plan, in the master plan that we went over. So that is always our charge as the planning board and how, and what can be changed in the proposed legislation to make it consistent with those governing bodies of law that we're guided by as the planning board. So I just want everybody to understand that. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, council. This is a presentation on the screen here before you. This was on the data portal. It hasn't changed since the floor amendments were published. So there will be some information here that I'll have to clarify by switching to another document. That said, I'll roll right into these slides. All right, so we have, in new sections to the Journal Square redevelopment plan, the mandatory affordable housing requirements. And then there were several updates that were, we believe, were necessitated or determined to be necessitated. And then there's maybe one or two amendments that might be slightly unrelated, but we can talk through those. So the new section that was born from the resolution that authorized the study of this amendment is the mandatory affordable housing. As Tanya stated, it's applicable when a building is 30 units or more. And the version that was posted to the data portal 10 days prior to today's meeting applied it to Zone 1 and 3. The floor amendment that we will be discussing reapplies it with some new language that's not in this presentation to Zones 4, 4A, 5, 7, and 8. There's also an opt-in clause, which was also something that we thought was necessary. So when a development doesn't reach 30 units, they can also opt in. Presumably, they reached 30 after that. Okay. There, just for some background, and Tanya went over some of this, there's a section that is 10% onsite affordable and 15% right now in the Journal Square area. The acronym that she was using was the Uniform Housing Affordability Control, which is a state law. And the affordability levels required are based on the area median income. So 50% is low and 50% is moderate. And then 13% of that set aside has to be set aside for very low. That is kind of confusing, but that is how the state law reads. Unit mix requirements. Studio, one-bedroom, no more than 20% of that onsite requirement. Two beds, at least 30%. Three bedrooms, at least 20%. And the remainder is at the developer's discretion. To also briefly give you some numbers about what that means with regard to income levels and rents. So at the very low, it stretches from $25,000. And at a moderate, for a four-person household, it goes all the way up to $96,000 a year. And rents are as low as $700 for a studio at the low income, very low income, and up to $2,400 for a three-bedroom at 80% AMI. Now, getting more into the meat of what we're talking about, and I'm about to switch over to the floor amendment document. But I'll just go over this text on the screen first. This is what was published and posted to the data portal 10 days out. Developments within Zone 1 and 3 are permitted to exceed the applicable maximum FAR and/or maximum height limits by no more than 20 stories according to the following floor area allowance. Developments are afforded a maximum of 5,000 gross square feet per one onsite affordable unit. There's also a residential amenity floor area clause. For every onsite affordable unit provided, developments are also afforded a maximum of 250 gross square feet per one onsite affordable unit to be used exclusively as common residential amenity space. The map to the right is Map 2, the Zone Districts map of the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. Zone 1 is in red, and Zone 3 is in yellow. The remainder of the zones, what we'll be talking about when I switch over, are Zone 4, which is in this kind of green teal; 4A, which is in this kind of blue; 8, which is in a light blue; 7, which is in a brown; 5 in a purple; Zones 9 is Parks, which is in green. We won't be discussing that, it's just open space. And then Zones 10, 11, 12 are in gray and will also remain exempt as part of this floor amendment. Okay. So we have this floor amendment document, which I'd like to enter as an exhibit. Could we mark that?
B2.
This is a 11-page document. And under the title, it has in blue highlight 6, 10, 20, 24 with floor amendments. Floor amendments are shown in this blue highlight. Scrolling to Page 2 is the section that was added to insert Zones 4, 4A, 5, 7, and 8. It reads, "Developments in Zone 4, 4A, 5, 7, and 8 are permitted to exceed the applicable maximum height limits by no more than 10 stories according to the following floor area allowance." Developments are afforded a maximum of 5,000 gross square feet. It is the same as the language above. The only difference here is that it maxes out at 10 stories. And that was a number that was determined from our research, looking at developments in those zones at that scale. And going through an exercise of realizing how many, how much variation there is site per site that they would max out at. Then there are some other clauses down below here, amending some of these other applicable clauses. So this is stating where they can opt in. This is stating or restating the exemption, so striking 4, 4A, 5, 7, and 8, and leaving it as 6, the preservation zone, and 10, 11, 12. 9 is actually silent because it's open space. Then scrolling through, let me just see if there's anything else. I don't believe so. No, there's no other, no other blue highlights. It is limited to Pages, Page 2 of this document. Okay. So I'm going to hand off some of these, this slide portion, to Elizabeth.
All right. So just to quickly go over how some of this analysis was done, there's two different types of studies that I'll be sharing with you. Some of them are based off of existing buildings, whether they're already constructed, occupied under construction, or approved by this board. And typically, on the upper right, you'll see which zone it's located. This is the existing conditions of the site. So this was as-of-rate development, 53 stories, 540 units, the number of affordable housing in the lot area. And then of note, so all of these slides moving forward, there are these tables at the bottom of the page. On the bottom left is the proposal from the resolution, and on the bottom right is the proposal from City Planning. So basically, what we want to see happen is the numbers in the dark gray box to be definitely greater than 1 and probably nearing the number 3. Probably nearing number 3. But could be, really, it just needs to be greater than 1 is the big item. So basically, what those tables mean is that if, under these proposed amendments, what would that yield? So you'll see on the bottom left, there's, the resolution proposal would yield six additional stories. That would result in 11 more market rate units and 61 affordable units, and that leads to a ratio of 0.18 to 1. So that does not meet the criteria that our team presented earlier in terms of accommodations. And then on the bottom right, assuming 5,200 square feet per affordable unit, but capping it at 20 stories. So this proposal would lead to a ratio of 2.1, which is 2.08 to 1, which is more in line with an accommodation that we were, that City Planning found appropriate. Okay, and then just similarly, I'll walk you through some of these other proposals. 499 Summit, this project is under construction, recently approved. And yeah, you can see, I'll just bring your attentions to, attention to the numbers at the bottom. 0.02 to 1. And then Planning's proposal, based off of square footage, is 1.66 to 1. And yeah, basically, how this was done, it was taking the exact same floor plan as the higher levels of the towers and just assuming, in the resolution proposal, six additional stories, and in City Planning's proposal, 20 additional stories. Same kind of assessment, so 0.33 to 1 and 2.8 to 1. This is the Erby Tower, 0.13 to 1, 2.0 to 1. And then, so these are, these are what we are, we're considering as soft sites. So that means sites that could potentially be developed in the future. So this is 625 Pavonia, it's located within Zone 1. The permitted development is six stories. My test fit of the site would yield about 22 dwelling units. And in this particular case, the resolution proposal would allow for an additional 0.7 FAR, which, this, any sort of modification to this site would just yield three affordable units and one market rate unit. This would be in, this site would just get one additional story under the proposed resolution, and that's a ratio of 0.33 to 1. With City Planning's proposal, we were, I'll just try to explain this item here. So basically, while this site would be allowed an additional 20 stories, the project would, it would only be feasible for this project to get eight more stories as the floor plate of the building would be fairly small because the site is small. So basically, what we end up, if, if, yeah, basically, you only get, so if there's five affordable units that are able to be accommodated within eight stories, so it's kind of this balancing game of how many stories can you get versus how many affordable units do you get? And you want to find the same level where they equal out. So for affordable housing units created, five units are created in, under the City Planning proposal, and that's where the eight stories meets that. So you get five affordable units times 5,250 square feet, and then you divide that by the typical floor plate of what would be allowed to be developed on that site. And in this case, that would only yield eight stories of development. But at any rate, it's still an appropriate ratio. As you can see, it exceeds 1 to 1. Okay, then just taking a look at some other smaller, soft sites, it's very similar kind of thing. So under the resolution proposal, two additional stories would be permitted. The distinction between Zone 1 and Zone 3 is that Zone 1 is regulated by FAR and Zone 3 is regulated by bulk and envelope. So yeah, for Zone 3, the resolution proposal would permit two additional stories, and that would create six additional market rate units, six affordable units, that's a 1 to 1 ratio. And then for City Planning's proposal, similarly to the last item that we looked at, this is permitted to go up to additional 20 stories, but would only go to 10 additional based off of the balancing of affordable units created to the floor plate per floor. Okay, and then 381 Summit, looking at some different ratios. Looking at some different ratios, just high level, the numbers for the resolution proposals, one point five to one, and then city planning's proposal was five point nine to one. And I can further discuss later if you all have questions.
Okay, and to kind of wrap up, we're on slide fifteen of nineteen. There were some other other amendments that were necessitated from this introduction of a mandatory affordable requirement. The first, the first being that we, we saw that there's, there's been there's been some kind of holes in the office space bonus and zone three corner bonus, which both are dealing with uses above the ground floor. So we, we are requesting that in this amendment that we expand those uses to, to include retail sales, restaurants, bars, nightclubs, and hotels uses. I'm sorry, hotel uses, which is already permitted in the zone three bonus D. We also are concerned with some recent efforts regarding policing on signage with regards to India Square in, in particular. These efforts have gone on in other places. So we have an example here from Union Street in Flushing, Queens of a Korean enclave that underwet a crackdown on signage. And we believe that to avoid any of that, we're, we're looking to exempt signage regulations in India Square. So that it can continue to be what it is, whatever that may be in the future. So not to crack down on signage that we might find unsightly or congested, but to to celebrate India Square for what it is. Okay, now to get more to the meat of why we, we did some of these other amendments. There were some rear yard requirements that were put into the plan several years ago in zone four, four A, five, and zone three that did not align with our latest updates to the master plan, which use percentages of lot depth. And because relying more on, on lot depth for, in, in percentage form for rear yard requirements, we're asking to incorporate those standards. However, we are also maintaining a feet standard, we're just doing whichever is less. And finally, a, not finally, there's slide eighteen, tower on the base regulations. Because there will be, they kick in at nineteen stories. Now that smaller lots will be triggering the tower on the base regulations as an outcome of the mandatory affordable requirements. We had to make updates to some of those standards regarding setbacks, tower lengths, step backs, distance between towers. They all were slightly adjusted. We also, to put the mandatory affordable language at a prominent spot in the plan, we moved the procedure for amending the plan down to a not prominent spot. So it's right up in the front. When you, when you read the document, there were some changes to roof treatments that better align or rely now on the L D O, which was more recently updated. We, we took out some language about street trees to rely now on our twenty twenty-three forestry standards. We align with building code by taking out some requirements for elevators and four-story buildings, which is not required by building code. And would allow for a more affordable building with the exemption of that unnecessary requirement, which was in the plan. We made sure that there's a clarification in zone four A. On a map in the plan, we allow for retail in four A, but in the list of permitted uses, we do not. So we're trying to eliminate that lack of clarity. And then there was just some other small typos and clarifications and citations that were fixed in that document and highlighted in yellow. I think we can move out of this. Are there any questions?
No.
Just for clarity, counsel and chair. We are kind of almost recommending two things for you tonight, right? One is the full exemptions or the no exemptions. And I think realistically for us, because we're the ones that have to deal with the zoning that gets passed, we just want it to be clean. So it will be up to the city council to determine whether or not those exemptions will be there. We are just recommending that either way, this is how it be done so we can work with it. We'd rather kind of keep it clean than keep it messy. Does that make sense?
Yep. That concludes your presentation, Tanya, and your team. Is there any questions from the board? If there is no other questions from the board, I would like now to open for the public. At this time, public is open.
Good evening, Board Commissioners. Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, here tonight on behalf of the entity Journal Square Strategies LLC that comprises some, a group of property owners within the Journal Square area that, that have an interest in the, the amendments that are being proposed tonight. Let's get a bit, we have a background. My office and my clients have been working probably over the last eight to twelve months with the Division of Planning on various amendments beyond the, the affordable housing component that's before this board tonight. And we've also had meetings with Councilman Bogiano's office and, and some members of the community were, were part of that. So we're very familiar with the issues and the process. So that being said, we, you know, we'd like to present and comment on the proposed amendments from, from my client's perspective and how, how they affect going forward, because these are very important amendments. They're, you know, going to change development issues and, and development proposals and opportunities in Journal Square. So in our regard, we, we believe that the planning's proposal tonight, well, we, we believe that's, that's the one that can create opportunities for affordable housing. We think it's a little bit light on the accommodations for square footage at the five thousand square feet and a two fifty. We believe those should be a little bit larger and partly because there's, there's a little discrepancy in, in what's the loss factor, if you will. Their report has it at twenty percent. We think it's probably larger at, at around thirty percent. And I think that's, that's an important factor that, that maybe those, those numbers should be bigger. But that, that being said, we've, and, and, you know, I'm not saying anything that I haven't said to Councilman Bogiano's office and members of the community in our meetings, we don't, we don't believe that the community's proposal will, will create the opportunities that they're trying to create. As, as the planning division pointed out, they're, I think they're inconsistent, they're, you know, with different properties. And at the end of the day, they're not going to create, as, as Ms. Marion's memo says, a realistic opportunity for affordable housing. I, I, I think unfortunately, you know, that, that proposal on paper, it might, you know, say it's going to create something, but I don't think empirically, it's going to create the realistic opportunity that they're trying to create. So I think, you know, of the two, we, we absolutely, you know, support the, the planning proposal as, as a means of, of trying to get there. In that, with that said, I have Mr. Height here. We've done our analysis, we think, we, we hope that the board will have the benefit of kind of an independent third party as to what we think. We had an architect here earlier, he had to leave for Bayonne, but if you'll indulge me, if I could have Mr. Height do a presentation.
Counsel, I'm going to actually ask the board if they want to hear from Mr. Height. I don't know what Mr. Height is going to do in terms of a presentation. I respect obviously yourself and Mr. Height. I think it's clear what your position on behalf of your client is with respect to consistency. Madam Chair, members of the board, I don't know if you want the benefit of Mr. Height's expert testimony. I've always offered him the opportunity to provide such testimony. But is he going to give a presentation site specific to one of your clients?
No, not, not, nothing site specific, more, more, he's, he's taken a look at, at the proposal and, and the presentation materials of, of the planning department. He's done his own review from a planning perspective, whether or not it creates a realistic opportunity. So I think it's, it's expert, additional expert testimony to provide to the board from, from a third party for you to consider, the board. That's, that's the point of it. It's not, it has nothing to do with a site specific projects whatsoever, just looking at, at the, the amendments as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Madam Chair, it's, it's up to the board, I have no, no issue.
I would like to ask the board if they have any issues. No, so we would ask, okay, Mr.
Okay.
For your presentation.
I do. Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Is your professional license current as?
It is, my license as a city professional planner in the state of New Jersey is current.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Height, you.
Mr. Height, you prepared a slide deck as part of your presentation. If we could, maybe just mark that, Mr. Lampy, should we mark it as public one?
Let's mark it as P one, P being for public, so P one. Have you supplied that to city planning?
We, we have not. This was just completed today.
Supply it after the proceeding this evening. So P one, go ahead and tell us what it is.
So it's a, a slide deck for the presentation. It includes a couple of tables, some information about various projects that were reviewed, and some of the maps from the redevelopment plan.
How many slides?
Twelve in total, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Height. No, I have nothing.
So I'll, I'll jump in, it, it's always a pleasure to hear, appear before this board. What you're being asked to weigh in on is housing policy. It's, it's not just affordable housing policy, it's housing policy. And I want to make the distinction, this past week was the New Jersey Planning and Redevelopment Forum. Top experts throughout the state in all areas weighed in on why we're facing a housing crisis. And we're facing a housing crisis because much of our housing policy is set in older zoning. And much of our affordable housing is, truth be told, designed and implemented to prevent any development. So because of those two issues, we are facing as a state affordable housing crisis. Jersey City is in a great situation and has been doing a great job at creating housing, creating new housing stock in appropriate locations through updated zoning, through a variety of affordable housing policy, and locating development in appropriate locations near mass transit and walkable communities. This board has appeared, has me, have appeared on many applications for site plan approval in that, in that regard. So this presentation is about active living policy and what I think should be behind why this city is thriving is multimodal, it's diverse, and it's growing, right? We're trying to accommodate growth, trying to accommodate development in the city. So first and foremost, this was pulled from the resolution. I want to make one distinction, and I think city planning referenced it. While they're both stories and F A R being proposed in the resolution form of this policy, really F A R is irrelevant because in Journal Square, that's only affecting one zone. So really you're, you're leaning on number of stories as a very, very rudimentary scale of added development. In a lot of instances, much of the development won't even be able to take account of that added number of stories. I think Ms. Marion mentioned that, part of our analysis walked through that. But again, just referencing that F A R isn't really applicable, you're leaning on the number of stories, which likely wouldn't be realized by many of the developments. This is a very small screen, but just a reminder, this is affordable housing policy and recommendations in the Journal Square redevelopment plan. The city and this board has reviewed the inclusionary zoning ordinance, as well as the affordable housing ordinance. We did a compare and contrast. There are commonalities between all of them. There's thresholds, so the I Z L and the A H O have a fifteen unit threshold. Both proposals before you have a thirty unit threshold. I agree with that, meaning that in, in that Journal Square is more dense area, larger developments, it's appropriate to have a higher threshold. You also, as Ms. Marion mentioned, both, all of them reference the uniform housing affordability controls, specifically the bedroom mix that's required. So I'll, I'll share that as well, but those are some of the commonalities. Where we see some of the differences, and what I would say is city planning proposal is consistent with the A H O and I Z L, is it, it sets a very clear and implementable policy through zoning that actually allows for flexibility for developers, landowners to go through the site plan design process and be able to provide this board viable project for development. So it doesn't shortchange the development process and it doesn't leave housing units in terms of affordable units on the table and also market rate units, which both add to the overall housing stock. Again, this board, this is a simplified table, city planning reviewed this. There are affordable housing contribution breakdown, that's on the column on the right. No more than twenty percent one bedrooms. No, a minimum of twenty percent three bedrooms and the remainder being sixty percent. We typically use the column in the middle as our benchmark of average unit sizes based on our experience. So much of our analysis that you'll see in a minute is based off five hundred for studios, seven fifty for one bedrooms, nine hundred for two bedrooms, eleven hundred for three bedrooms. We worked off of the case studies that city planning provided to kind of test them out from our perspective. Walking through this analysis, six twenty-five Povonia, which is what we would consider a small site, would yield five affordable units. It would then generate twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty gross floor area. That's the gross floor area. I think what was mentioned earlier is there's a difference between gross and net. It's part of our.
Mr. Height, you're, just for the record, you're referring to your analysis under the community proposal, your, your slide says C P, is that correct?
Correct, no, that's city planning.
Oh, city planning, okay.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. So when you walk through this analysis to understand what actual residential square footage versus net is created, you get to the bottom three, bottom two, two rows. At the end of the day, the bonus that's created by providing the affordable housing would generate seventeen thousand square feet that you could use for market rate. And then that would yield, based on the square footages that I just provided you, twenty-four units. So there's, there's incentive affordable housing to market rate housing. You compare this, and I'm just skipping ahead one slide, to the residential proposal. When you work out the actual gross floor area ratio, you do the deduction for the net residential floor area, you really only have a remaining bonus of a hundred and eighty-eight square feet for market rate residential square foot. That's not even a unit. So on a small scale project, you're not giving any incentive to create affordable housing. It's, it really is a tax and it's disproportionately affecting smaller developments. We looked at the larger site, so this is five thirty-two Summit Avenue. A total of eighty-seven units would be generated by the city planning proposal. That would yield four hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. So if you were able to go up as far as you wanted, you would reach forty-six stories. City planning, they're, in their proposal, they have a limit of only twenty stories. So even though the bonus would yield more, you have an appropriate cap on it that reflects a little bit of sensitivity to the overall development. Again, getting to the last two rows, you would produce a yield of a hundred and four thousand square feet provided for the residential market rate units, and that would net approximately a hundred and forty-six market rate units. So not only are you accounting for eighty-seven total affordable housing, you're also generating a hundred and forty-seven units. 147 units. This is in a large site with a large development, where the development should be accommodated, and this is testing that out. So when you compare that to the resolution proposal, you walk through the math, 57, again, compared to 87, only 57 affordable housing units are generated, the remaining market rate units are only two, when you walk through the actual gross and net residential calculation. So less affordable housing, less units would be generated, again, I reference my oral statement, we're in a housing crisis, Journal Square is one of the places in the state that should be accommodating more density, both affordable market, affordable units and market rate units. We see this map often, city planning showed it, we provided it because a lot of the density that we think would be accommodated through the proposal, in terms of reaching the 20, 20 additional stories would be in the core, in Zone 1, as well as in Zone 3. If the floor amendments were to move forward, and it would be applicable to all zones, I believe there's a 10-story max, that would be comparable in Zone 5, and some of the less intense zones. We did work with a few architects who we do a lot of development in Journal Square, here's an example, or a slate of examples, the point here is on the smaller side of development, where you have a smaller development project, your efficiencies are higher, generally because you're not providing floor area for amenities, they're smaller buildings, you typically don't work that into the overall design. On larger projects, where you have 10, 13, 16 stories, you provide for a higher amount of residential amenities, that reduces your efficiency. So in these examples, we provided the, the split of 65% net residential square footage versus 35% non-rentable or non-residential square footage, and we worked through the math on different sizes of, of what would be the contribution in terms of the bonus for every one affordable unit. So at, at a 500 square foot, a 5,000 square foot bonus, you're generating four, 4.6 units, that would be five, that would be a total of five units, one of them would have to be affordable, and that would be an obligation of 20%. When you increase that yield, so that bonus, when it goes from 500 to 7,000, accommodating more residential amenities on the larger buildings, you can see that the, the mix of affordable units to overall units drops to 16.6%. And then when you take one step further, and you, you work with a bonus of 8,000 square feet, again, increasing the amount of amenity space for developments, you, you fall in line with what the obligation is for affordable housing, which is closer to 15%, this, this would yield a, a ratio of 14.3. When you work, work through this, this study, we just wanted to state formally that larger buildings do require more square footage to accommodate for amenities. From, from the development, from take analyzing these, these development projects, I think the, the, the end result was in a middle ground where a proposed bonus would be about 7,000 square feet, would actually yield the right balance between not only the bonus for residential units, but also the amenity space that comes with it, that supports those units. I think that completes my, my testimony, I do think there's some disparity in the resolution proposal, it inaccurately, inaccurate, inadequately relies on FAR, and then also leans on stories which are kind of irrelevant because of the footprint of a building. So footprints of buildings, as I believe Ms. Opera said, change per site, it's really irrelevant as to how many stories, because you have to meet setback requirements, so I believe city planning, the city planning proposal does accurately hone in on square footage, because that's what is more or less the common denominator in Journal Square. That's my testimony.
Thank you, just one final comment, it's kind of to reiterate, we, we think if, if those square footage accommodations were increased, I, I think you're gonna, it's gonna result in more realistic opportunities for the, the development of affordable housing, so, you know, I just hope that the board would consider that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Here we go, Katie Brennan, K-A-T-I-E-B-R-E-N-N-A-N, my home address is 20 and a half Highland Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Ms. Brennan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, we could have spared our, our expert witness some time, because we've actually, as the community, moved and grown a lot since the, the first ordinance, and, and we are going to recommend that the planning's, planning's expert recommendation about the square feet is actually the way to go. But my name is Katie Brennan, as I just said, I'm a resident of Ward C, I'm also a planner and affordable housing professional, and I am a member of the Journal Square Community Association Affordable Housing Task Force. The city of Jersey City made a commitment to affordable housing when it passed the IZO, and Jersey City wants to harness the development happening across the city and ensure that we create and preserve affordable housing. When that ordinance passed, we in Journal Square expressed concern that it wouldn't quite work for us because our entire neighborhood is covered in a redevelopment zone. So now, you know, a few years, thousands of units under construction, and truly, literally only a handful of affordable units to show for it, you saw the examples and how they were all zero affordable units, unfortunately, we were right. So the past few years, we've endeavored to amend the plan to accomplish the original goals of the IZO, and truly make it as similar to the IZO as possible. This amendment does not change the underlying base zoning, it doesn't make new development, it takes the development that's already happening on every block, and holds the developers accountable in creating affordable housing, as the city has so many times already said that they, that they plan to do through the IZO. We've worked for two years, and have worked with the planning, who has been extremely patient with us, thank you, Tanya, Matt, and others, hundreds of members of the Journal Square Community Association, who have cited in surveys as, with affordability as their very top issue, the various neighborhood groups, and just truly thank you, I'm here to thank you for your time and your expertise, and we hope that you do recommend moving forward with this, and I look forward to working with the councilman and the rest of the Journal Square Community Association in advancing this ordinance, so thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do. Michael Ehrman, EHR, M-A-N-N, 30 Enterprise Court, Unit 403, Jersey City. I am chairman of the Affordable Housing Task Force of Journal Square Community Association. My background is a mixture of a longtime real estate appraiser, but also seven years in the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department in Washington. I also thank the planning staff for working so diligently, this is a, this is a major endeavor you've seen here, and it's developed over time with, with improvements as we go. I want to cover several things, first of all, Tanya has introduced a floor amendment, we, we want to thank her for doing that, we got more than we bargained for, the, the community pressure was to introduce 5, 7, and 8, not to introduce 4 and 4A, and sometimes consistency is good, and, and my organization would like to see 4 and 4A in, but sometimes there's some other issues, and there are community issues with 4 and 4A, which we're going to have to look at going forward, it, it's not likely to be part of the council resolution because of disputes about whether this will accelerate development too rapidly because of the bonuses, and so a complicated discussion that we're not going to have tonight. In any event, thanks for putting 5, 7, and 8 back in, the board will decide what to do with the entire amendment. There's one other aspect of the amendment that Journal Square will disagree with, the planning has recommended that one block of Newark Avenue be removed from District 5 entirely, in terms of the redevelopment area, and that's far too early for Journal Square to agree with, it's an entirely new idea, and we would have to hear a lot more before we did anything on that. A few other things, you've seen the examples from the developers, it highlights one issue that's not quite clear in, in the draft, the initial drafts said required, based on required affordable units, which suggested that if you had, there was a building 540 units, it generates 54 affordable units, is the 5,000 times 54, or is the 5,000 times the expanded building after you've added the bonus? That needs to be clarified, because originally, we always thought that if it was originally 540 building, 54 times in the earlier measure is what was, what would be done, it's, in the bigger buildings, this is a substantial difference, because if you take the expanded building and say they have 73 units in it, and work backwards and say the expansion can be 73 times 5, big difference. Last thing, on the accommodations, the, I've translated the, the last resolution into gross floor area additional, it was about an average of 2,200, we're now being proposed 5,000, plus this question of, of, plus 250 for the, for the amenity, that's a big jump. When the councilman said before he would like to visit with, with Tanya, he's, a lot of it was to hear from planning, more than we've had time for, in terms of the.
I'm sorry, your, your time is up, yes.
But to get ready for the council meeting, in terms of whether to accept that 5 or not.
Thank you. Good evening.
I do. My name is Mary Miraglia, M-I-R-A-G-L-I-A, I live at 50 Day Street in Jersey City.
Ms. Miraglia, you have three minutes.
I'm sorry?
You have three minutes.
So I'm also a member of the Affordable Housing Committee of Journal Square Community Association, just for background, I have been writing about, researching, studying affordable housing since the first decision, Mountain Royal decision was made in the early 1970s, when I was a government reporter, and I have worked on community housing in two communities in Bergen County. That being said, coming to Jersey City, it was really a little disheartening to find that there was no affordable housing requirement here, and to watch, building after building of nice, solid, affordable to people housing being knocked down and replaced with apartment buildings of 600 square feet for $3,000 a month, and I'm a leasing agent for seven and a half years, so I'm very, very familiar with the market. So the community came forward and acted because we were not seeing what needed to be done, we worked on this for two years, admittedly, there may be things that still need to be worked out, but it's time to stop dragging our feet and push this forward, let's send this over to the legislative body where it belongs, and let them have at it, because it's inevitable, it is going to happen, and there's really no reason to drag our feet any further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening. I do. Sure, Christopher Lamb, L-A-M-M, home address is 158 Chestnut Avenue. Thanks.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Vice President of the Journal Square Community Association, and I chair our Construction and Planning Committee, that committee meets with developers who are getting ready to appear before you all for site plan approvals. In my five years in that role, we've seen over 50 site plans, and I can count in one hand the number that include affordable units, and that's including the number that would have triggered the inclusionary zoning ordinance, had it been in effect that entire five years. So to the, to the city's credit, recognizing that we are in a affordable housing crisis in this region, and housing is a regional issue, we've been developing a lot in Jersey City to try to address that issue, but it requires equal investments in other parts of the region. New York City, for example, grew by over 300,000 people between 2010 and 2020, did they build that many housing units? Not even close. So we've been a bit of a relief valve, but the city hasn't been pulling their part, the suburbs aren't pulling their part, and so it's, you know, we, we've been doing what we can, I guess. But again, the, the development that we're seeing in Journal Square for many years has not included affordable units, and this is where you want to see affordable units. We're a diverse community in terms of income, economic diversity, and, and any number of other measures, and it's important to preserve that. So our Affordable Housing Task Force, recognizing that issue, has worked with two year, for two years to address that, I want to repeat some of the thanks to the city planning staff, to Councilman Boggiano's office, who's been working with us, to other members of the city council, who we've, we've engaged at various stages, and even members of the development community, to kind of get us to this point. I did want to talk a little bit about the question that Tanya proposed, just on whether certain zones of Journal Square should be included or not, and I think it's important to include as many zones as possible, certainly Zone 9 is parks, let, let's let those be parks, we have so few of them, but if we were to exempt 4, 4A, 5, and, and most of the zones in the redevelopment plan area, these amendments would not really succeed in generating the affordable units. Most sites in Zone 1 and 3 are either already built, under construction, already have approvals in place, there are very few opportunities to have that, this amendment, generate affordable units with what's left. If we're serious about our intention to generate affordable units and maintain economic diversity.
I'm sorry, your time is up, yes.
We, we have to include as many zones as possible, so thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, Tom Zuppa, Z-U-P-P-A, 2935 Kennedy Boulevard.
Tom, you have three minutes.
Thank you, to everyone's joy, I won't, I won't take all that time up. Tom Zuppa, President of the Journal Square Community Association, a lot of hard work went into this, so we thank the planning department, Councilman Boggiano and his office, and our Journal Square Affordable Housing Task Force, I just want to say it's so great to see so many JSQCA members here, so thank you for the support, for what this committee did, and as I said, I'll be brief, when you look at Journal Square and the changes, and you think about a vision for the future of Journal Square, with new, new park coming, some entertainment options, you know, we're going to return to what the heart of the city is, but the first step of that vision, and it cannot exist without having affordable housing, so residents can stay in their homes, and new residents can move and have opportunities in the new buildings going up. So we fully endorse this amendment, the much-needed amendment, hope this board will as well, and again, we thank you, the planning and to our, our council partners.
Thank you.
I'm back, I'm like a bad penny, but.
Harrington, can we allow the rest of the public an opportunity?
I'll, I'll be quick.
Okay.
So for the record, Charles Harrington of Connefolly, I'm here on behalf of Satish Maharaj, he is the owner of 47 Cottage Street and 57 Van Ripen Avenue, it's a, it's a through lot that, that runs from Van Ripen to Cottage Street, and the reason I'm, I'm here on his behalf is this property is in, located in Zone 4, and as, as been, has been testified tonight in the report, the accommodation for Zone 4 is 10 additional stories. We are requesting that the board consider changing that to 20 stories, the reason being, and, and it's kind of site, it's, it's outside specific, but really, I think, not thing, but the, the more general request would be Zone 4 between Summit Avenue and JFK Boulevard, and if, if you recall the map that, that Mr. Height showed, it's, it's kind of within that area that you. you have a lot of Zone 3 properties. It is, all of those properties are within close proximity to the Homestead Place Extension, which is taller buildings, 27 stories, and right by the core. So, you know, our thought is that that area of Zone 4 is distinguishable from the other Zone 4s in the Journal Square area, which are really on the outskirts of the redevelopment plan area. So, you know, that being said, we're, you know, we'd hope that the board would consider that because we think that, again, because of the proximity to, you know, the Journal Square path and Homestead Extension, that you're going to create better opportunities or more opportunities to create larger buildings there and more affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? And that's it for me.
For now.
For now. Good evening. Yes.
Yes, Kuldeep Kumar, K-U-L-D-E-E-P, last name K-U-M-A-R, 107 Thorn Street, T-H-O-R-N-E in Jersey City.
You have three minutes.
Okay. I'm here to speak on behalf of 47 Cottage Street and 52 Van Ripen. I'm the co-owner there. I have been speaking with planning for months about this zone change, so as Mr. Harrington said, I'm requesting this...
Sir, are you represented by Mr. Harrington?
Yeah. He is, but I'm just...
I mean, he just gave the same address, council.
Yes. Yes, he's not an owner of the property yet. That's why I specifically represent the property owner, but I mean, I...
Sir, are you going to mirror what Mr. Harrington just said?
Yes.
I thought so. Okay. Thank you, sir.
It's a ditto for the record.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
We'll make sure your name gets in the record as supporting Mr. Harrington.
Good evening.
I do. My name is Anupam Varma, A-N-U-P-A-M-V-A-R-M-A. I own 36 Van Ripen Avenue.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Okay. So I am here to talk on the affordable housing properties. So I have been living, or I have been resident of Jersey City for a long time, and I'm seeing there are buildings coming up, and the cost of rents are going up, cost of livings going up. And we need more affordable housing to bring down the rent, to have affordable rent that we can afford. And I support to have more affordable housing on these properties that we are here to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Sanjeev Chopra, S-A-N-J-E-E-V-C-H-O-P-R-A, 76 Cottage Street. So I'm here to support 47 Cottage, 52 Van Ripen Avenue, for which they are requesting 20 stories. And I believe anything in Zone 4, even I have other properties in Zone 4, giving affordable housing, more units to affordable housing only can be delivered by giving developers some incentives to build higher and higher stories, so they can have some more units for affordable housing. At the same time, development cost should be compensated by adding more regular units. So I would say Zone 4 should be allowed and should be exempt from there, so we can go high and high, at least 20 stories.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm supporting 47 Cottage and 52 Van Ripen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Always wonderful to see you, nice seeing you, planning board commissioners. I think you've seen the councilman and I regularly, on a monthly basis, and usually we're here with everyone, all the neighborhood groups, the Hilltop Neighborhood Association, McGinley Square Neighborhood Association, Sergeant Anthony, Marion Neighborhood, and many church groups. And most of the time, I think 100% of the time, really, we're fighting density, right? We do want affordable housing, but not at the risk of ruining neighborhoods. You hear a saying every month, "Stop ruining our neighborhoods," right? So I'm not, nothing new here, but we also need affordable housing. We have been working with the Journal Square Community Association's Affordable Housing Task Force for about a year, almost every day, for every day, five times a day. And from the beginning, the task force and the councilman did not want to give bonus densities. It was, we just wanted mandatory. So when we first had this resolution, I think September, planning came back with their recommendations saying that we had to do bonus density. We went to different legal research, as well as other sources, because we were still fighting it. By the time February, we've accepted planning's table recommendations, and that's what you see on the resolution. It's city planning's recommendations. We want to work with planning. We do love you, Tanya, believe it or not, we do. And we want to work with city planning, and we do respect them. So we included their recommendations, and we always want to listen and work with their recommendations. So that's what happened in February, March. We went out to the community, we started selling this resolution, and we got most support, but then we got a lot of help from those neighborhood groups that you always see us with. They said leave 4 and 4A out. Why? Because those areas are already suffering from construction and bonus density. So if you brought back the maps again, I thought that was great, so thank you for those visuals. And you see, instead of, oh, now our plan allows seven floors, their plan now allows 14 floors, I think was one of the examples. So take a look at those visuals again, and understand the bonus density that we're giving, which we understand now that we have to give on that calculation. So the councilman wants balance between affordable housing and density. He does not want to solve the entire affordable housing crisis in the state of New Jersey and Jersey City. Let's not do it all in Jersey, Journal Square redevelopment plan. Let's find a balance. So, let's see. So the councilman is firm, very firm...
I'm sorry, Cam, your time is up.
Excluding 4 and 4A. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Seeing none?
I see no one from the public, and I'd like to make a motion to vote on...
We got to close first.
Oh, sorry. Closing. Sorry.
Councilman, you don't want to have any more time? I'll afford you the opportunity if you'd like.
You own a home here, you own a home, you own a home. All right? I've watched the city being destroyed, and 4 and 4A, I want out. And it's coming before the council, and I'm going to make sure it's out. And if Tanya wants the other sections out, that's, I'll speak to her. But I've watched our communities being destroyed. I'm sick and tired of it. I'm tired of the developers. I get up in the morning, and all I do is hear construction at my house. I go to my front porch, I hear construction from Newark Avenue. I go to the backyard, I hear from Journal Square. I'm tired of it. You're not coming into my neighborhood, you're not coming into certain sections of this city and destroy it. And it's over. I mean, they want to develop, let them stay in Journal Square and other areas, but they're not coming into where there's one and two family homes anymore. And believe me, the residents of Jersey City from what, A, B, C, D, E, and F are tired of it, because they're chasing everybody out of this damn city. And you know what I mean, Doc, and you know what I mean, and you know what I mean.
Thank you, councilman.
Got to hear from Tanya.
Yeah. At this time, I would like to ask Tanya to, for her comments.
Sure, I just, let's summarize, there's a lot of things that we heard, so let's just get all on the same page here. I do want to say I left out master plan consistency, so for the record, creating affordable housing through the increase of density is mentioned five times within the master plan. It is within my memo, so it is already on the record, at least in paper. I just wanted to make sure that we got that out of the way. So the original resolution that was sent in October was just mandatory, and it didn't allow for any kind of compensation at all. Our original recommendation to that resolution was that it's not legal, right? Matt and myself, we're not politicians, we're professionals. So we can only give you the professional answer, whether or not you like it. The response was that they would agree now to the accommodations. I know we keep hearing the word bonus density, and you can say potato-patato, but that's not the reality. The reality isn't that it's a bonus, it's an accommodation. I'm telling you, no matter what, you have to have affordable housing on your site the second you have 30 units. By law, by multiple case laws throughout New Jersey, I have to provide some compensation to you. So this is a combination for the mandatory affordable housing that I'm requiring on your site. That's really the frame that you need to look at it. The second frame is, the resolution talks about, the resolution of the councilman, creating new affordable housing. So the reality is, how do we do that? Right? So I can write anything, I can write a law that says anything. If the reality of that law is that it does not create new affordable housing, but instead actually discourages any kind of development, I'm not creating new affordable housing. The words in the case law are realistic and reasonable. I need to create realistic and reasonable opportunities if I'm going to require affordable housing. Based on our study, a more realistic and equitable way to do that was through square footage. And again, the 20 stories is a cap. So a developer might actually find that sweet spot at an additional 10 stories. And in some of the instances that we did, they wouldn't have needed the full 20 stories, but we don't need to go fully into that. I want to expand a little bit further now, based on the floor amendment that you have before you. So that was the first thing. The first thing is that the councilman has an ordinance before you. We recommended conditions, the conditions that we recommended to change in order to meet our recommendations were substantial enough that we just rewrote it. Okay, that's the truth. We got a lot of pushback about exempting Zones 5, 7, and 8. So our response to that was, again, if the council, again, this is a political decision, right? We're professionals, and we are giving you our professional recommendation. Zone 4 represents over 40% of the zone. Zone 5, 7, and 8 is about 11%. They're on the periphery. So our recommendation professionally was that you be consistent. So if you don't want exemptions, if you want exemptions, then you need to be consistent. It needs to be within Zones 4 through 8. You can't say the zone that's further into the residential area has to have affordable housing, but the zone that's closer to the core doesn't have to. You're saying it doesn't have to create affordable housing, and again, that's 40% of the plan. So our response to that was, if you want to exempt it, you have to exempt all of them. And if you don't want to exempt it, you have to include all of them. And that's a matter of, again, our professional opinion on legal consistency, and whether or not you are reasonably and realistically creating affordable housing, which is the purpose and intention here. So I know that is a little confusing, and I know, your council is here as well, right? So we are, there's the original resolution that has the original ordinance, there's our proposal, and then there's kind of like an addendum that says, if you want to do this, we're asking you to do it like this. And just so we're clear, we're not, we didn't ask for Zone 5 to be taken out, it was a suggestion to eventually take out India Square. It's not something that you guys can do tonight. You need, you need to have the city council authorize you to do that. It's just a suggestion that was listed in our memo.
Thank you, Tanya. Is there any questions from the board?
So, Tanya, I guess the only question is, is it pick one from city planning versus, we know what the councilman's proposed ordinance was? But then there was the original proposed changes by city planning, and then there was the proposed changes with the floor amendments?
Yes. I, we're actually, we're actually kind of asking you to pass both in that sense. We're asking you to say our alternate, but in the instance, that's city council decides that they are going to exempt or not exempt, that they follow this. I don't know if that's actually an alternate, or that's just one recommendation, but it is different from the amendment that we wrote. It's kind of an addendum. I don't know how you want to handle that.
Also, I think it's important that we, we understand that the recommendation is for the proposed amendment, right? City planning's recommendation...
Correct.
Is for the proposed amendment, and then city planning further states that it's either exempt everything to be consistent, or include everything to be consistent.
Correct.
But you can't pick and choose certain zones for the exemption, because it creates inconsistency.
Correct.
And then it's up to the body, what they recommend in terms of, do we want to exempt, or do we want to include? Is that, is that fair?
Correct.
Everybody understood that?
Yes.
Okay, so Madam Chair, as always, I'm more than happy to answer any questions of the board, if there are any. Otherwise, I think it's proper to entertain a motion.
Any other questions from the board?
We got to, we got to entertain a motion.
We have to entertain a motion at this time. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion on case number P2023-0068.
Second it.
We're entertaining the motion.
I'd like to make the motion to, make a motion to vote on case number P2023-0068.
So the motion is to, do you want me to attempt to articulate? So the motion is, do you want to go with Councilman Boggiano's recommendation, or city planning's recommendation? And then if you're going with city planning's recommendation, it's whether or not it includes all the districts, or exempts some of the districts, as being consistent and sending that to council for action.
That's what our actual vote is based on, with Boggiano or the city planning.
Right.
Okay.
And then if it's with city planning, exempting or including for purposes of consistency.
And voting yes would be for city planning, and voting no would be for Boggiano.
So if the motion is to recommend city planning's proposal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now you have to choose. Do you want to exempt all the properties, or include all the properties?
Mm-hmm.
It's your motion. I'm asking. Include, or not include?
Include.
Okay, so it's a motion to recommend to the council that they adopt the changes proposed by city planning, including all of the districts as proposed in the floor amendment.
Okay.
That's the motion.
That's the motion, okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second it.
You have a motion and second, Madam Chair. Call the roll, please.
Cam, can you call the roll? Or Matt?
Be happy to.
Matt, thank you.
Acting Chair, green.
I vote for... You want to give her a minute and take another person?
Except for...
She has to go.
...board.
I think they're saying go to somebody else.
Yeah.
To exclude, I don't want to...
Yes. The council's going to make the decision ultimately.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Stamata.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote aye for all everything. That's what I want, all zones.
All zones.
And thank you for everybody coming down for affordable housing. That's what we need in Jersey City.
And Acting Chair Gangren.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out this evening and voicing your concerns. Councilman, thank you so much for your involvement in the ordinance, and which will be going back, the recommendation will be going back to City Council, and ultimately, City Council, that governing body, will be making the final decision. So I am very happy that it's with you and your colleagues on the City Council. The recommendation here from City Planning, I am extremely happy to see that all zones are included, and it was part of a long planning coming to the City Council for a vote now. Thank you, Tanya, and your team for such great work. My vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor on a motion to recommend adoption with City Planning floor amendments.
Thank you. We'll take a 10-minute break. So we'll be back at 7:45.
Everything is fine, see, you people won.
We're going to go quick.
Yeah.
We're going to go quick.
I hope so.
You good, man? I heard you're busy.
Yeah, busy. Very busy.
Heard you've got a lot of folks by the way.
I would like to call the meeting back to order. At this time, I will call on case 10, P2024-0002. Preliminary and final site plan with C variants. Address is 27-29 Fayette Avenue. Attorneys Tom Lee.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Tom Lee from Connell Foley here on behalf of the applicant. The application before you is a notice case.
Thank you, Council.
Madam Chair, I have been received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 27-29 Fayette here in the city. This matter had been originally placed on the May 21st agenda and was carried at that point in time from the April meeting. I've had the opportunity to review the notice prior to the meeting. It did appear to be in order, so we're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you.
The application before you this evening has previously been before this board. It's located at 27 to 29 Fayette Street. It is a 50 by 137 square foot vacant lot. Just briefly to give the board a little bit of background, the applicant appeared before this board back in November of 2023. We actually had multiple meetings before the board where the application was ultimately unable to obtain approval from this board on a 3 to 3 vote. The project that was proposed then was a 20-unit building containing two affordable units utilizing the affordable housing overlay. And it was to be constructed on the vacant lot, which is in the R3 zone. The R3 zone allows for up to eight stories at this site, but has a density cap based on the size of the property. What the affordable housing overlay does is it gets rid of that density cap as long as affordable housing is provided on site. And my client took advantage of that to bring, to raise the amount of units in the building up to 20 units. The previous building proposed 12 parking spaces. The affordable housing overlay actually removes the requirement to have parking within the building. However, my client did provide 12 spaces in the previous iteration of the project. It also had a roof deck and was not a fully enclosed garage. There was some slits on the side. Of course, unfortunately, the board did not approve the project that night. It fell. And a large part of that was there was some pushback from the community. And I think there was some misunderstanding from the board that we hadn't reached out to the community or been in contact with them. To rectify that, I actually provided the board with a memo showing my outreach to the community prior to the last hearing. There were two community meetings. Since then, my client has actually gone back. He met with members of the community last Friday night. He met with Councilman Bogiano, and Commissioner O'Day were present at that meeting. And there continue to be some differences in what the community is looking for. However, in response to some of the comments we received, not only at the prior hearing, but what we've, in our communications, we have changed the project. And that's one of the reasons that we could come back before the board this evening. I provided a memorandum to Mr. Alompi outlining how we overcome what is called res judicata, which is basically this board made a decision, we have to come back with a substantially different application in order for this board to hear it. So what are those changes? Those changes are, we removed the roof deck. That seemed to be a cause of concern for members of the community as far as noise. Even though we did not require a variance for the parking, and because the AHO gets rid of the parking requirement, we did raise the parking count up to 14. 14 parking spaces are what is required in this zone. So even if we didn't have the affordable housing overlay, we'd be meeting the parking standard. We have also provided some additional landscaping in front of the building. And one of the biggest changes is we removed a variance as it relates to the bulkhead for the stairs. There was a requirement that it be setback from the facade of the building. The new application meets that standard. So right now, we do have variances. They are related to setbacks, both at the front, side, and rear of the building. But again, some of that is to recapture some of the bulk that would have otherwise been on a taller building. Eight stories, again, permitted in this zone. One thing I do want to just highlight is that this has always been the R3 zone. This wasn't changed with the new master plan review. This was R3 when we filed the application back in 2022. It was R3 when my client bought the property back in the early 2000s, and it's still R3 to this day. So it was always the intent to have a more dense and tall building on this zone. So with that said, I would like to have my first witness up. It's Guy Lago Marzino. He's going to walk you through our civil site plan. As a reminder, for those of you who are not here for the last application, we had to do some substantial work with the JCMUA to service this site. Essentially, there are buildings that are to the east of this property on Fayette. When they received approvals from this board, one of the conditions of approval was that they were going to give back portions of their property to the city as part of a dedication to make a right-of-way and a street widening. The utilities that would have connected to my client's property were supposed to be part of that dedication to the city. For whatever reason, that dedication has never happened. So we've worked with the JCMUA. I've provided conditional approval to this board that shows there are three possible ways to connect this property to the sewer. And if we are unable to either get that dedication to work out or unable to get an easement from the neighbors, there's a third alternative, which Mr. Lago Marzino can detail that was in the letter provided to you by the JCMUA.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I do. Guy Lago Marzino, L-A-G-O-M-A-R-S-I-N-L.
Is your professional license current?
It is current, and I've been before this board.
Thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you. I got it right here. No.
We got six months out of the port camp.
No, he's saying that it's the port.
Mr. Height, you hooked up. Did you use a different port?
You want to try a different one? You have all my information, I believe, right? Maybe it's the wrong side? If you get it, then I should get it. No. But then let me put it back to me, that means it's okay. Wait, that means I'm okay. If you're okay, then I'm okay. Well, then you're going to give me to my... Then you want to flip me to, so I can flip it? Which numbers are... But you have my latest ones?
This is what Renee sent me. That's 27 here.
Just start with the first one. Okay, that's over there. So I can just go forward this way, correct? Okay, go back, go back, go first, go to the first. Okay, so let's begin, I think we're... Again, I was here before, we have had numerous meetings on this. I think there's a lot of controversy that's been over this project. This is a dead end right now. On a city map, it looks like it goes through to 109. It does not, it dead ends at this point. And due to that, the complexity of it has gotten more complicated because of the fact there's no sanitary lines and there's no water lines at this dead end. The truck depot just beyond the gate there, and they have their own facility, and I think, believe they have their utilities from 109. And they also, as far as the stormwater is concerned. So this is, becomes a unique location because of the fact that the utilities, there's no utilities on the street. On Wales, which is not too far from there, about 150 feet, there is a sanitary line combined, which we were able to design something that we were able to get the floor...
Sorry, can you speak into the mic, please?
Okay. That we'll be able to design an ejector pump to get there for this residential areas. So a couple of things that I want to hit upon pertinent that for this, that has changed so much from that. We've increased the parking spaces to 14, which was mentioned. And we now place, the maneuverability is workable with our size standards as well, and able to exit. We still have the stop sign, as well as, you know, there's only one way in, one way out, as well as the landscaping in front. What is, what is the complexity is that we have had the ejector pump that has a combined system, which is combined, will bring over to that location, which was a lot of concern, which was the drainage, as well as the runoff from the site. We have two ejector pumps that will be ejecting both the storm as well as the sanitary from the site at any given time. We have complex, very large ejector pumps, doubled up. And because of the complexity of the site, that in the case, God forbid, that there is an outage of any sort, that means all of the thing would back up. So we've proposed to put a generator on the roof, which would, let's go to that, that's this site. We have a generator on the roof that would provide electric for the ejector pumps on the site. And that being said, we, the generator size is also for the emergency powers as well in the establishment. And now, what I think is, what has changed also in addition to this is the exhaust now, because we have now closed walls, and before we had open, we have to accommodate the enclosed space with exhaust ducts through the roof. And as far as the letters that we went through from Jersey City will be in compliance with and all their standards. I think that basically covers most of the changes that is pertinent to this.
So just quickly, Mr. Lago Marzino, you've received letters from the JCMUA that detailed three different methods for connecting to the sewers. If one doesn't work, we can comply with the other ones.
That's correct.
Okay, you've received letters from traffic and engineering and the Jersey City engineering, and you've reviewed them, and we can comply with the comments there.
Yes, we can comply with all the comments, as well as the sidewalk and movement of pedestrians from the, too, from the site.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions for this witness unless the board has questions, unless they'd like to save him for the end.
Any questions from the board? No, thank you.
All right, my next witness is our architect, Mark Campione.
Good evening. Yes. Mark Campione, M-A-R-K-C-A-M-P-I-O-N-E.
Campione, is your professional license current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
It's a good standing.
You're qualified.
Thank you. Okay. So here we are again today. So I'm here to walk you through the changes that were proposed, as mentioned earlier, with regards to the letter issued. So essentially, I'll take you through one page at a time. So essentially, here's our vacant lot for the members and audience that have not seen it previously. It's a vacant lot that is next to a multifamily home, two-story. Here, this is our cellar plan. Basically, we are putting our utilities down in our cellar plan, which is going to accommodate our sprinkler system on the first ground floor. We're going to have 14 parking spaces, as mentioned, with one handicap. We're also going to have a bike rack here in the corner to accommodate 10 bikes. We have two staircases here for a means of egress, and the elevator. With a small little lobby getting into the first stair at the front entrance. So our floor plate hasn't changed much. Basically, we're going to have two bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, one two-bedroom, and one studio on each floor from 2 through 6. All right, and this is the third floor to the sixth floor. And as mentioned earlier, the roof has been changed from patio to just a roof to accommodate any equipment, mechanical equipment. There's still a staircase upstairs, access to it to maintain. But the bulkhead, again, at the front entrance, has been removed, removing the variance. Here is your front... I did it. Here's your front yard setbacks. Currently, the front of the building aligns with the adjacent two-story existing wood-framed building. It has a setback of 3.1 feet at the breezeway between the building. We are unable to accommodate the shade tree request for trees because of the depth of our current sidewalk. So what we are doing is accommodating a two-foot portion of landscaping for evergreens, a total of 10 of them. We're still going to accommodate the 10-foot curb cut. Something you want to mention?
Yeah, just a quick question for you. The area where the new sidewalk and the roads are, that's actually within our property line, correct?
That's correct.
It's being given back to the city as part of the public right of way.
It's actually 13 feet.
Yep, to match up with the neighboring properties.
Correct. Sorry, have to be patient with me. It's a touch. I'm not a millennial. Let's see, there we go. Two fingers is better than one. And this description of landscaping detail shows the proposed evergreen, proposing boxwoods. This is our front elevation, again showing that the bulkhead's been removed, eliminating that variance. And the elevation is pretty much more of the same. The materials are consistent with ACM, black metal aluminum. We have a glass and aluminum overhang for the entrance, black trimmed glass storefront windows, and ACM panels. This image here is proposing our idea for our sconces, our wall sconces, and the numbering, lettering that goes over the marquee say. Left side elevation, more similar materials, ACM. Right side, ACM. Also illustrating the staircase bulkheads. This is a section showing the new proposed utility area of our cellar. Again, bubbled area on the right-hand corner showing the bulkhead removed for the access to the roof. Larger section here demonstrating the egress stairs. And that is it. Let me back into civil drawings. That concludes my presentation.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
On the affordable units, what floor are those units are on?
Two, two units are going to be affordable.
Yeah, no, I understand that. What floor are they on?
They are on the first floor, second floor.
First and second or?
No, the second floor.
Second on both? Both units?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the makeup?
Do you want to speak for it?
Yeah, sure. There's a three-bedroom and a two-bedroom. One is low and one is moderate. And if you give me a second, I will confirm which is which. I believe the low income is the three-bedroom. Yes. The low income is the three-bedroom and the moderate is the two. And I should just note that usually when we have these conversations with the Affordable Housing Division, you know, they, they might ask us to change where the units are in the building. So, you know, that's, that's going to be up to them and part of our agreement, which will be a condition of approval with the, so we, we're not setting it in stone right now. If the affordable unit says they want, you know, different, the units in different places in the building, we'll work with them on that.
Counsel, I don't believe we can change the low and moderate and number of bedrooms.
We cannot. And that, that's part of the, as part of the process of getting here. We provide an affordable housing checklist form to the Division of Affordable Housing. They have to sign off on it before we get here. So that number is set in stone. It's just the location inside the building.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, since the chairman's not here, you'll make the representation that all the finishes will be equal quality and all that good stuff.
Yes, and we can make that as a condition of approval. And I should state as another part of a condition of approval, just because we went through the facades, we've agreed to contact and work with the mural department to possibly put up a painting on one of the sides of the building that is blank currently. So we've agreed to work with the mural program on that.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'm going to bring up my final witness, Charles Seit.
Any questions from the board? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, for purposes of the record, you were sworn early this evening and you remain under oath.
Yes, noted, and thank you very much.
And your license is still current?
Still current.
Notice you didn't check your email. Do you want to check your email to make?
Two-year, two-year renewal process. But putting, putting aside the candor, again, it's a pleasure here to appear before you on this application. We've been working from a zoning standpoint for the better part of three, almost four years on this application. We're in the R3 district in the city, so that's a mid-rise multifamily district. What's before you tonight is a mid-rise multifamily development. Part of the evolution of this project really did incorporate what's referred to as the AHO, the Affordable Housing Overlay District. What that allows you to do as a developer or a property owner is to provide affordable housing and then increase your development yield within the framework of what's contemplated in the zone you're in. So in the R1, slightly smaller developments. In the R3, you do contemplate larger developments. You contemplate mid-rise, mid-rise developments. So for this application, what's before you tonight is a mid-rise multifamily. We are proposing a six-story, 20-unit development with 14 off-street, off-street parking spaces, which we have coordinated with all the professionals to ensure that there's adequate circulation for the additional off-street parking spaces from the prior layout. In terms of where we landed at six stories, the zone actually permits eight stories. We aren't proposing eight stories in effort to try and minimize the impact and use the size of the property, which is approximately 6,850 square feet. So in doing so, we're able to reduce the height of the building but make the footprint a little larger. Part of my testimony will, will, at the tail end, will address the impacts of a shorter but squatter building. In my opinion, in doing so, you're transferring the seventh and eighth story that you're able to do under zoning to lower floors, thus decreasing the overall impact. So in terms of the requested variances, these are bulk variances where you could either have a hardship test or what I would offer to the board is that there are benefits that outweigh the associated detriments associated with the variance request. So first and foremost is the front yard, front yard variance. This is actually a maximum requirement where there's a maximum permitted of 10 feet from the front property line. We heard from the project engineer and the project architect that we have a unique frontage along Fayette, where our property actually extends into the right of way. And we need to account for that, providing the appropriate sidewalk. And what we've done in terms of a design standpoint is match the adjacent property in terms of the setback and sidewalk width. So therein lies the benefit with the consistency with the adjacent property. We're able to make the improvement to accommodate the sidewalk. Because of the width, we are also proposing the landscaping that was noted. We weren't able to accommodate the tree pit because of the dimensions of the required tree pit, but we are making the payment in lieu. That's with respect to the front yard. With respect to the rear yard, one of the requirements is restricting the upper floors in the rear yard setback. That requirement is 25% of the lot depth. In terms of raw numbers, that would equate on this property 34.25 feet. When evaluating, again, the overall height versus the footprint of the building, we thought a shorter building at six stories, but a slightly deeper building would be the appropriate balance for this property. A few of the reasons why, the depth we struck was 20 feet. So we are still providing a 20-foot rear yard setback above the ground floor. This still does provide separation to the property line, but more so, it's upwards of 50 feet to the nearest adjacent structure to the south of the property. So again, that 50 feet is substantial and will allow for sufficient light and air for that adjacent property. The other part of it is the design part. We are able to accommodate in this layout 10 three-bedroom units, five two-bedroom units, and five studio units. You don't typically hear that bedroom mix where it's slated higher. These, this development will produce larger units that can be, that can accommodate families in an, in an appropriate location. We're right outside Journal Square, likely that the, the, these families would require at least one vehicle or, and, and the five studios would not. So that's the balance in terms of the parking and the higher bedroom mix that we're proposing. In terms of the side yard, we, there is a minimum requirement of three feet, of five feet for lots that are 37 feet wide to 59 feet wide. What we are proposing on the east property line, that's adjacent to the existing structures, is three feet. That's meeting building code requirements. On the other opposing side yard, we do have two areas that accommodate the stairwell and the, the two stairwells that are at the zero-foot property, but the majority of the, the building is set back. I think one of the elevations showed this clearly. So you can see the blank walls are where the zero foot are, are accommodating for the, the staircase and the, the second means of egress. But the majority of that, that facade is set back, and that's where we're proposing the side yard windows. Again, this still meets building code. And this adjacent, the, the property adjacent to this is the trucking distribution or it's a, it's a moving facility. It's an industrial use. It's much more intense. At night, there's no activity, no impact on the residents. But we favored having a zero-foot side yard setback on, on that adjacent property. So again, it's the appropriate location for, for the relief needed. With respect to the negative criteria, I'm going to bring up our visual impact assessment because I think there was a lot of discussion and concern. Well, there are two issues. One was, was parking, where we increased the parking from the prior proposal. And the other was the impacts of the mass. So with respect to that, again, we are dealing with a vacant property. This is a visual impact assessment. We submitted it. It's prepared, or, or prepared on April 25th, 2024, but it's been submitted for some time now. So just in terms of the aerial, to remind the board, we're dealing with a vacant site, 6,820 square feet, which is a substantial size in the appropriate zone. So we are proposing a six-story structure. When we look at the adjacent properties, to the north is the path rail cut. Again, to the, to the east, you can see some of the residential, existing residential development. And to the south is where you have the adjacent rear yards that front along Broadway. And as I mentioned earlier, the industrial use, which is to the west. So when you run, when you develop the proposed development in, in our 3D modeling program, obviously we have a vacant site on the left, but on the right, we, we scale in the footprints by floor to create the 3D image. The main point when we move to the next slide is that as the sun passes over this property and the shadows are created, they're all created and impacting land to the north. So all the residential homes that are located along Broadway, as you can see, I think that one of the best times is in June in the afternoon, which is on the next slide. So we have here at the bottom, we have the summer months where people will be outdoors. You can see in June and September, the impact of the shadows are occurring west on the one immediate property owner. Again, this is a property that has, is, is existing. But in September, the impacts are to the north, which is really into Fayette and the path rail cut. None of these, none of these images that we prepared show any impacts to shadows south of the subject property. So you can see that, the evidence is there where we didn't identify any marginal increase in shadows. There's no green. That's where we show the marginal increase. There's no green that favors south of the building because the shadows would be towards the north. So in terms of impacts from the proposed structure, we've provided an appropriate setback, the 20 feet, which actually accounts for a total of 50, if not more, to the adjacent structures to the south in terms of separations of buildings. And then also the impacts, because we're a, a property located to the north, we have no impacts in terms of shadows. I mentioned the other, other aspect was parking. We, we did increase the parking count. We did work with the civil engineer, architect, and traffic engineer to provide an appropriate layout and increase the, the total count to 14. And lastly, this, this project will account for two affordable housing units. So I, I think the board chair had a question about that. We are proposing one three-bedroom unit and one two-bedroom unit of the total mix. In terms of any impairment to the intent of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, I would just offer that we're in the appropriate zone for the use and we're really balancing the square footage instead of a seventh and eighth story with a slightly deeper property. We're still able to accommodate an appropriate number of units and introduce affordable housing to the overall project, which is consistent with the master plan, which I'll just cite from, from the 2021 master plan to ensure the city's available housing is balanced and meet the needs of all current and future residents. With that, I can conclude my testimony. I don't know if there's any questions that we have, but I'd be happy to answer questions from the board.
Any questions from the board?
I do have Lee Klein here, who is my traffic expert, if there are any questions related to the increase in parking. Otherwise, just to sum up, you know, this, this project really is the intent of not only the R3, but the Affordable Housing Overlay. The intent was to incentivize developers to build onsite affordable housing. And this is, this project is the result of utilizing that program. You know, we're always, there's always going to be disagreements in communities about what the appropriate use of a vacant site is. And you're going to, I'm sure, hear some of those disagreements. But the, the project today in front of you has come a long way. And it's taken into account a lot of the comments you heard the last time this application was before the board. Taking off the roof, increasing the parking, adding some greenery in the front. Those were all things that we, we did to make this a better project. And I think, I think this project is something that my client can be proud of and it's something that, that fits into, into the R3 zone. So with that, I have nothing further unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any questions from the board? I would like, at this time, I would like to open up for public comments on this agenda item. From the public, you have three minutes.
I'm going to be brief. I was at the meeting the other night and I, at Mount Carmel. And the residents are here to speak, but I just want to say they're destroying the Mount Carmel neighborhood, just like they destroyed the Journal Square neighborhood, and they're destroying other neighborhoods, all these buildings. And all of you have been passing all these buildings, passing all these buildings. Well, this is another neighborhood down there that's tired of it. There's a lot of one- and two-family homes back there, and people are getting tired of what's going on here in Jersey City.
Thank you, councilman. Good evening.
Good evening. I do. Michael Manzo, M A N Z O, 82 Wright Avenue, Jersey City, lifelong. First of all, Mr. Height, thank you for doing a tremendous job bringing everything here. The last time we were here, it was so much mishmash that we don't know. And still, I'm hoping that the MUA is on board with the hookups and stuff like that and the plumbing inspector about the generator, the rear wall with the tank. I'm still concerned, was the path notified there, the adjoining neighbor of the two, within the 200 feet?
Yes.
Okay. The street measurement from what we were told is 28 feet. And I don't know if that includes the berm because if you're going to have two ways of traffic there, it's kind of hard. I measured about 20 foot, I paced out. So that's a concern. There's no catch basins, curbs, street lighting, or anything on that street. And the expense to bring that into compliance or normalcy, I hope it's not borne by the taxpayer. We're trying to be consistent in the neighborhood. Although it's an R3, there's ways of looking at things differently. Marion's a unique town. It's surrounded by one- and two-family homes. We sort of like look out for each other. And some of the sway here was the ability to realize that one- and two-family homes, being there for so many years, you come to respect one another and do what's pleasant to everybody. We all could get along. At the meetings, we didn't have this cohesive bonding with the developer. And I just want to point out one thing, and I brought to the attention that Mrs. Torillo, who lives to the who lives to the back of this, has the ability to look out of a window now and see whatever she looks out. She's upwards of ninety years old right now. She's been there for a long time. And when I brought that to the developer, I says, but she's not going to be able to see that anymore. The comment was, I know how to fix that. Just tell her to look straight up. I felt that was kind of low. We're people here, we have to get along, so there has to be a trade-off where we understand one another and, and to, to just say, hey, this is the story, blah, blah, blah. I mean, aside from getting a gift of the R-three and everything that comes with it, we have to give variances on top of that. I think that's asking for too much. And on, the other thing that we have and it's a big concern, we finally came into the map where there might be talk of the path station coming to fruition. Every developer who has come to the table has acknowledged that and has worked with us, given back land and whatever else we need. I hope that is a contingency here, if it decides to go forward, that whatever is needed, contacted by path, that we can have that resolved now so that this doesn't stand in a way of us going forward. I thank you very much for your time.
Good evening.
Hi, uh, my name is Lisette Justiniano, L I S E T, Justiniano, J U S T I N I A N O, one twenty-six Broadway.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Council. Um, the reason I'm here today is to voice my opinion, my position on the construction of the six-story apartment building. Uh, just a quick note that um, we were not notified for, on, for the first uh, meeting or the, of the construction of this uh, building. We were uh, became aware of it later on, like um, on the second notice in May or April of this year. So um, our stories is my family and I have been living on twenty, uh, one twenty-sixth Broadway for the past twenty-three years, but also having residence of the Marion neighborhood for over thirty-five years. This has always been a quiet story neighborhood despite busy street, the reason why we have been residents for so long. We live in a small one-family home that it's over eighty years old with a warehouse to the back and the Bro, um, Broadway Street on the front. We enjoy the tranquility of the location of our home where early mornings we can hear chirping birds on the back and other everyday soundtracks on the, on the front of the house. We suddenly learned that there will be a towering six-story bu, building that is slated to be constructed about two hundred feet away from our home. This new construction will be very much impact the quiet surroundings that we've enjoyed throughout the twenty-three-plus years in the neighborhood. That plus it will have an immediate visual impact where we'll, where we will have an obstructive view of the sky for ourselves and our neighbors behind. Will not be met with a huge structure looming over our property. This will certainly alter the ambience of our surroundings, potentially affecting our sense of space and privacy. We're also concerned about how this will affect the structure of our eighty-plus-year-old home with the drilling and hammering and the vibrations that happen during the construction for such a big structure. Beyond aesthetics, um, there are practical considerations. With the new building comes increased food, traffic and activity. Our once tranquil street may now be, see a surge in vehicles and pedestrians altering the peaceful rhythm we've grown accustomed to. This shift in dynamics could also affect parking availability as construction crews and future residents guess buy for space. Noise becomes unavoidable companion during the construction phase, the sound of hammers, drills and heavy machinery will fill the air, disrupting our daily routines and peaceful mind. Thus endeavors may also find their way into our home necessitating extra cleaning and maintenance efforts. As a work from a home employee, I will, this will be extremely disturbing for me and also for my many seniors living around the neighborhood like my parents, that stay at home all day. Moreover, the towering presence, the towering presence of this six-story building will impact the natural light on my property, my hallway experience shadow cast by the new structure, potentially dim interiors and affecting plant growth in our garden as, as my mom and I are avid gardeners. Flood is also a concern as it is known that this area is prone to flooding and having such a structure could potentially affect our homes during the rainy season. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Isabel Cruz, excuse me, Isabel Cruz, I S A B E L Cruz, C R U Z as in zebra, uh, I live at one thirteen Broadway.
Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I met Mr. Amir Beeman and Natalie on June of twenty twenty-three. They knocked on my door and introduced themselves. Natalie informed me that she had bought my neighbor's home next door to mine. I welcomed them into the neighborhood. In the days that followed, Natalie informed me that she and her dad would be renovating her house. Mr. Beeman and Natalie were always upfront about everything they were doing, letting me know what type of work that was going on at the place. Mr. Beeman has always demonstrated to be a responsible, attentive and caring person. He told me if, if ever I had concerns about the work going on in his daughter's house, he would address them. Furthermore, he offered his services if we needed anything fixed. If the problem was a big project, then he would advise me as to what was the best course of action. One day, Mr. Beeman noticed that my doorbell wasn't working and on the following day, he replaced it at no charge. At our home, our homes caught fire on the night of November twenty-ninth into the morning of the thirtieth. Mr. Beeman and Natalie learned our whereabouts and brought my family and me breakfast. Mr. Beeman then went a step further in helping us. He went into my house and winterized my household plumbing again at no charge. When one's home catches fire, there are so many things that we don't know. When my insurance company requested that I secure the house, I thought it meant locking the front door with my keys. After clarification, I immediately thought of and spoke to Mr. Beeman. My neighbors, whose homes also caught on fire, immediately requested Mr. Beeman's assistance as well. This was not a money opportunity. At no point did he approach anyone in order to sell quote-unquote his services as many others had done. In the time I've come to know Mr. Beeman, I have found him to be genuinely kind, humble, responsible, caring and hardworking gentleman through his sis, his daughter Natalie, who is clearly very proud of her dad. I've come to know about the homes he has built and renovated. Recently, I have come to learn about Mr. Beeman's plight. He has owned a vacant property for the past twenty-three years, a property for which he has paid taxes. He is making a request to build a six-story house on his own property. He is following all the legal requirements and adjustments to build this home. He is even obliging the request to, to him made by individual members of the community, such as removing the rooftop, providing a garage for his tenants, so parking would not be an issue. Mr. Beeman is also including affordable housing and having a beautiful mural painted on the side of his building. This gentleman is clearly doing his best to satisfy everyone, but to no end. The building will be adding to the beauty of our neighborhood and eliminate the unattractive flood.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I do. Guadalupe Ochoa, O C H O A, the last name. My address is eleven Corbin Avenue. So I lived in this city for forty years. I came from Peru. When I came this con, this city was totally different. But now I come in here to testify that Mr. Beeman and his family have owned this business, a small business, which is to help people. I am, you know, proud to graduate from mastering human resource. Human resource is towards, human resource. He is trying to help people to get affordable renting for people who doesn't have money, enough money to pay, you know, his own apartment. I was temporarily uh, director of the, of the daycare with night pre-cas. I can, you can imagine how those kids coming, some of them in the morning, you know, with their eyes closing, they say, I can't sleep well because in my house lives two, three families because my parents can't afford one apartment. We had to share with my family, with friends. It's so sad to see them sitting in the decks, trying to sleep because they don't sleep well at home because the noise, because the other family have kids, because the other family making noise, that's mean, it's terrible. But Mr. Beeman and his family is trying to build some affordable house where they can give, you know, the opportunity to pay the rent lower rate for those people who doesn't have enough money to pay for the lower rate, you know? And so why people have to try not to understand this one, just singing the, singing those kids, singing those families who doesn't have money, enough money to pay their own apartment, they have to share. And they, I know this family for forty years, since I came this country. They are do, this, this business, they are doing, you know, with no interest. They always trying to help people like the other lady said, they always help many people. No, it's only that they get money and they just do business because they want, they want only get money. No, that's not true. If you can see, if you can imagine it, many people, they help building house, building is remodeling house, you know, you can put, you know, these troubles for them. I just ask the people here to sing about that, to sing the family because this, this city needs those kinds of apartments and know those buildings, big buildings where the people coming they from New York to pay three, four thousand dollars because they can't afford, they pay, they get more money over there.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sure. Yes. Sure. Natalie, N A T A L I E, Shore, S H O R E, one eleven Broadway, Jersey City.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so I'm just going to start with, uh, I'm not sure if you've gone down that street before, but it's just, there's only one house on the block and then the lot. People go there and just throw their garbage. It's an eyesore. Uh, brand-new construction is going to be a facelift for the community. It's going to bring more, you know, new families, new community. That's what Jersey City is about. Change is a good thing. Sometimes it's not easy, but it's part of life. I mean, what's better than a new construction and with the theme of tonight, I think, was affordable housing, right? And you never hear of large affordable housing units, usually they're studios. So here, there are going to be three and uh, two-bedroom. I just want to say um, that this is also a personal project, so I am the daughter of, of the owner and I do own a property on one eleven Broadway. This project's been an ongoing thing for twenty-three years. And my dad had a partner who was his best friend and like an uncle to me and it was their dream to see this come to fruition and unfortunately, he passed away five years ago. So I have been helping uh, to get this uh, up uh, for him and I don't see anything negative about it. I mean, it's, this is what Jersey City is about. I mean, it's a city and we need, as we know, we need apartments. There's, there's not enough. There's a lot of people in a city. I think this is going to be something uh, super positive and clean up that area. I mean, it's, it's just one house, the lot and then the industrial area. So it's going to totally give it a facelift. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Sure. Name is Joseph, last name Capozzoli, C A P O Z Z O L I. I live at twelve Bryant Avenue in Jersey City.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Members of the board, thank you for hearing me tonight. Uh, I'm here actually to speak in opposition of this project as currently being proposed. Uh, we are certainly not against that lot being uh, developed and it's true, it has been that way for many, many years, but we and the community would rather be developed in something that is more closely conforming to what is in the area right now, which are smaller homes and nothing that size in that area. I want it noted that when uh, it was first brought to our community, um, about maybe eighteen months ago or so, it was originally proposed as five stories and sixteen units. That evening, the community uh, did not support that project as proposed. Uh, they did agree to perhaps reconsider or give it some, some consideration and come back to the community, uh, after we provided that feedback. Uh, what happened was they did not contact the community. We only found out about um, them raising it to six stories and twenty units when some of the people who live in the immediate area received the notice that they was going to, they were going to come before the board. That's when I was co, uh, contacted and a few others and we were able to have it postponed here and had a second community meeting. Again, that meeting did not show uh, any support for not only the original, but now the increased uh, height. So again, um, I'm certainly not here to say they don't have the right to build. It is the R-three, they can go as high as eight. However, that doesn't always make that the right thing to do. So I'm hoping that tonight you may uh, consider having them go back and perhaps lowering it a bit uh, for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Since no one else is here from the public, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on.
Closing, closing.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to close public.
Francisco, can you?
Yes, so I will be very brief. Um, staff does agree with the comments Mr. Hyde made. Um, staff does also see, does not see any substantial debt, uh, substantial impairments to the intent and purpose of the zone plan as well as the zoning ordinance. Staff does recommend approval with conditions and my staff, my staff report is on the data portal as well.
And I've reviewed those conditions and they are acceptable.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion on case number P zero two four dash zero 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 two.
Do I say it again? I'd like to make a motion to vote on case number P two zero two four dash zero 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 two. To approve.
You second that, Dr. Desai? You have a motion second, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Acting Vice Chair, uh, Green?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai? Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Stomato? And Acting Chair Gangadin?
I want to thank the public for coming out this evening and voicing your concerns. Um, this, this presentation this evening, um, with a revised plan, it's a much better plan that's presented to the board and it's in line with our master plan as well. So having said that, I'll vote aye.
Okay, four in favor, one abstention?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
I'd like to move on to case number eleven, case P two zero two three dash zero zero nine five, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Address is forty-two dash forty-six Cottage Street.
One second. Good evening, Council. You are not Ron Salgian. I don't think that's on, Council.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, George Garcia here from Connefoley. I have case number seventeen on the agenda this evening for fifty-five Hudson.
Yes.
I would request that, that be carried to the July ninth meeting.
Okay, Council.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Anybody here on case P two zero two four dash zero zero four zero fifty-five Hudson Street? That applicant has requested the matter be carried to July ninth, twenty twenty-four with no further notice and preservation of that notice. So if you are here on that application, it is being carried to the July ninth meeting with no further notice. Finally, I just have to advise everybody that it is now.
That's correct. May it please the board, I'll be brief in my opening comments. We have four witnesses available, Mr. Garber, the architect, Ed Breaman, our civil engineer, Catherine Gregory, our planner, and Lee Klein, our traffic engineer is here as well. This project is a, an application to construct 45 units plus retail on the ground floor with indoor parking and fif, with 15 spaces. It consists of 35 studios and 10 one-bedroom units, making a total of 45 units. The lot size is in excess of 9,000 square feet. It requires five bulk deviations, which our planner will testify to. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Garber, and he'll initiate the presentation.
Yes, I do. Sure, it's Richard Garber, G-A-R-B-E-R. Current, yes, through July of every year renewed, yes.
You're qualified.
Thank you very much. Very happy to be here tonight. We think that this project is a, is going to be a nice complement to the block on Cottage Street. You see here, the, the site is made up of three lots, and I'll go into this and the nature of Cottage Street as we go through. There are a series of older houses to be demolished to make way for this building, and Cottage Street at this point is in a, an interesting kind of transition, and you'll see that from the elevations that I put up shortly.
Mr. Garber, can we mark this as A2?
Sure, Santo, and we'll make sure that it gets to your office in the morning.
Do you know how many slides by chance?
I have 26, and I think the, the engineer has another eight, if, should he present. The project is in Journal Square. There's been a lot of talk about Journal Square tonight. We are in Zone 4 on Cottage Street. You can see the approximate location of our site here in the, the Journal Square redevelopment plan. The survey, as I suggested, consolidates three lots, and the total size of said lots is 9,045 feet. And what is interesting about that is that allows us to qualify for the, the office bonus, which can be applied to lots over 9,000 square feet and allows for an additional two stories and 28 feet of height. And the idea of this bonus is to allow the mixed-use buildings that are in and coming to Journal Square to take on that commercial use, furthering the kind of mixed-use goals of the site. Now, as of the, of the zone, excuse me, as Mr. Saljean suggested, we do have a few variances. They're not significant variances, but we should go through them. You see in, in yellow, we've listed building height, and that's specifically because of the office bonus that we are looking forward to, to have in this building. We do notice for a deviation for the, the height of the ground floor. We are showing it at 14 feet, and the reason why we're asking for that deviation is we are showing stacked parking spaces. Parking is not a, is not currently required on this site, however, the owner felt very strongly about putting them in, and so we've spoken with staff on, on this, on this change. Additionally, we have a design waiver for the location of the generator, and I'll talk a little bit in a, in a moment about overhangs over the right-of-way, which we think we're handling in a clever way. To read some key points into the record, the lot area, as I said before, is 9,045.36 actually, square feet. The gross building area as proposed is 58,011 square feet. There are three proposed occupancies from a building code point of view, a mercantile, that's the commercial use, the residential use as well as parking. As I said, this is Journal Square, 2060 Zone 4 on Cottage Street. The proposed building height with that commercial bonus is eight stories and 92 feet. What would normally be permitted is six stories without that bonus. As Mr. Saljean said, 45 residential units are proposed, 10 one-bedrooms and 35 studios. There is a fair amount of retail proposed, which we think is really great in the building. There are two smaller retail spaces, both about 500 square feet, 561 and 501, on the ground floor that I'll show in the site plan, and then what we're calling Retail 3 and Retail 4, which is the commercial use on floors 2 and 3, which are about 5,300 square feet each, which are really great. We do have a cellar level proposed here, and that contains a bike room with 52 spaces as well as about 1,600 square feet of amenity. And I should also note, there are four additional bike spaces provided on the exterior of the building, which we've located in the right-of-way in consultation with staff. And two elevators are provided. I'll go kind of quickly here. One for the commercial spaces, one for the residential spaces, and finally, there is a roof deck that I'll show you in the plan. Now, in terms of the site plan, we do have a number of apertures and openings on the front of the building. From left to right in the plan, the closed red triangle is the garage entry, the open red triangle is the residential entry, and then the three blue-red triangle, three blue triangles, excuse me, are the retail pedestrian entries. And there's three because we have two specific retail spaces as well as a proposed lobby as required by the office bonus to take people up to the second and third floor. We did meet with the Journal Square CAP Committee sometime ago, over, sometime ago, probably about six months ago, and their comments were primarily about street trees. You see that we are proposing two street trees that I've just circled, and our civil engineer can speak to that should you want some additional testimony. Lighting plan, we've got some outdoor wall sconces on the front, four to be precise, as well as parking garage lighting, and then garage wall sconces at the rear of the building as seen here. And then we have a trash room located in that cellar level I spoke about, so trash would be brought up the elevator and then brought out as, as depicted here.
Richard, while you're on this page, one of the variances is a minimum aisle width, is that correct?
That's for the, yeah, that's for the parking garage. I'll show that in the next slide, actually. Yeah, thanks, Ron. So briefly, you see here our lowest two-floor plan. So on the left, you see the cellar floor, which has a fair amount of storage, that's 1,600 square feet of amenity space in green, as well as that trash room and proposed 52 bike spaces. What you see on the right is our ground floor plan close up. You see those two retail spaces as well as the retail lobby all the way to the right of the building, and that aisle width that Mr. Saljean is talking about is in the drive aisle itself. And I'll remind the board that parking is not required. We're voluntarily putting parking in here, and while we can fit a two-way circulation in and out with a 10-foot garage, it is a little bit tight, and it's been noticed for, but can be made to work given the very small volume of cars that we have here. Right? So that's on, on this, on this, on this slide. And again, you can see the pedestrian entry points as well as the vehicular entry points on that plan on the right. These are our two office bonus plans. We're calling them retail. Retail is a permitted use there. We don't really have a, a, a use per se at this point, but understand what the uses are as permitted. It will either be some kind of office use or maybe a second-floor retail. But you see, these are large floor plates. There's about 5,300 square feet on the second floor and a little less than that, 52, 34 square feet on the third floor. What's nice about this plan is you actually see how we've broken up the residential stair and elevator core, which is on the left, and then the retail stair and elevator core, which is on the right, and you can see on both floors, we're showing the requisite restrooms and so forth. Now, our residential plans, you see, we are taking a 25-foot setback in the rear. The fourth to sixth floor plans, which is the, the first residential floor with the commercial bonus, is the fourth floor. We have nine units per floor, seven studios and two one-bedrooms. And then the upper floor, seventh through eighth, we have a same total of nine units, seven studios and two one-bedrooms, and we are taking advantage of a court that you can see that actually gets a little bit larger. That court is over the commercial elevator that you can see in the lower floors. One of the things that you'll notice in terms of our front setback, this is one of the deviations we are requesting. We're saying that the front setback varies, and it varies because we actually have a kind of diagonal undulation on the front of the building that I'm gonna go into in some depth in a moment. Our proposed roof plan, as you see here, the yellow is the common roof deck. We are showing an enclosed amenity space on the roof, that is per the plan, and we've done the calculation and shared that with staff, and so we're quite, quite sure that we're, we're within the, the allowable area for that. Now, our building elevation, this is the front of the building. You can see that we have a garage as well as the residential and retail entries on the ground floor. The second floor is an office floor, so there's a kind of red brick that, and I apologize, I did not bring my materials with me, but I think you can see them, you can see them here fairly clearly, a red brick on floors 1 and 2. And then as we transition up, that third floor, which is still commercial, transitions to be like the residential floors above, so we're breaking the building at that kind of second to third floor transition. And then up above, we have a series of concrete, exposed concrete, basically finished concrete, as well as a fair amount of glazing, cementitious fiber panel, as well as metal grates that you see. The rear of the building follows a similar logic with a little bit more fiber panel and some smaller windows, but nonetheless, you see that the front of the building and the back of the building, if I switch back and forth, are fairly similar. The sides of the building, just stucco and exposed concrete, and you can see here the windows in that east-facing court that I showed you in the plan, and then the west elevation here, fairly simple. Now, you start seeing the kind of trans, transition, transitor, transitional nature, excuse me, of the block when you look at this elevation, right? You see a completed building to the left, you see some of the older context in between, including those great exterior stairwells on that building immediately to the right of us, and then you see a tower at the end of the block, right? So this is literally all sorts of scales of multifamily, some commercial as well, and it really speaks to the mixed-use and changing nature of the square. And because of that, we've decided that our facade, which you've only seen straight on at this, until this point, actually has this kind of flutter to it. And by kind of folding the facade back and forth in on itself, we're beginning to break down the scale of the building while still celebrating a kind of vertical moment in the facade. That's been studied fairly consistently, fairly thoroughly, excuse me, in terms of the building shell and how we can create separation and that kind of thing, so we are quite confident that technically we can do this, and we think it actually makes the building look pretty, pretty cool as well. We do have a series of enlarged elevations as required. We're on point with our sizes of signage and so forth. We have a kind of placeholder retail now and the building address. The building address may change to a name of the building. We have done solar studies. We are nowhere near the tallest building on the block as you've seen, and therefore are not really doing much specifically in the summer and spring and therefore fall equinoxes, fairly minor shadow casting, and then in the winter, what you see is actually some of the larger buildings that are further south in the square are actually projecting shadows back on us. And then this is the axonometric view of the building where you actually see that kind of flutter that I've talked about in the facade, and then finally, the enlarged front elevation again. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Do you have a compressor for the trash?
A trash compactor. I'll show you the plan again really quickly. So we do have a, let me just get to that trash room really quickly, an enlarged trash room here. So you see that we have in this plan, where's my mouse, a compressor right here. So this is a precision machinery system spec, and then we have trash bins and recycling bins, and we're quite sure that this trash room is, is large enough to accommodate the number of units we have here.
And where are you going to put the trash outside? What's on Cottage Street or in the back?
So the trash will stay in the building except for collection periods, and on collection days, the trash will be brought out for collection. So there, you know, the way we do these buildings is, I've, I've mentioned to this board, presented to this board before, all trash is held internal to the building, all recycling internal to the building, only brought out on collection days.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Great. I'll just put an image up. There you go.
We will take a five-minute break.
I'm sorry?
I said we will be taking a five-minute break.
Okay.
And then when we come back, you will, will have your second.
Right, civil engineer.
Yes, thank you.
You want to go out?
Yes, thank you.
My name's Elmer. I'm representing the applicant NEQ 8A LLC, which is 20 long slip. We're listed for 14 and 15 tonight. And speaking with the planning department and looking at the hour, I'm gonna ask to be carried. Apparently, there's an availability on June 25th because we have a timeline on our subdivision, so we're hoping that the board sees fit and Mr. Lampy can carry us without any further notice. That's what we're hoping for.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel. Case P 2023-0102, 20 long slip, as well as case P 2023-0103, also 20 long strip. That's a minor subdivision director. We have that availability on the 25th.
We do, counsel.
And in light of the nature of the application, can we get it higher on the agenda? I know this, this applicant has been carried multiple times, and the minor subdivision's gotta be acted upon in less time than some of the site plans, so I'd like to see it higher up on the agenda possibly.
We can absolutely do that, counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
If anybody in the public is here for either one of those matters, they are carried to the June 25th. There will be no further notice. This is your notice. Mr. Harrington?
Yes, how are you, Mr. Lampy? I have another adjournment if I could sneak in here. Yeah, for the record, Charles Harrington, Connefolly. I'm appearing on behalf of Mr. Lean for Agenda Number Six, Agenda Item Number 16, 1725 Perrine Avenue. Would ask that that be carried as well, and I believe it would be to July 9th would be the two weeks or two-meeting carry with preservation of notices, and we would waive any time restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Case P 2024-0040.
I'm representing the applicant in EQ8A LLC, which is 20 long slip. We're listed for 14 and 15 tonight. And speaking with the planning department and looking at the hour, I'm going to ask to be carried. Apparently, there's an availability on June 25th because we have a timeline on our subdivision. So we're hoping that the board sees fit and Mr. Lampy can carry us without any further notice. That's what we're hoping for.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. Case P2023-0102, 20 long slip, as well as case P2023-0103, also 20 long strip. That's a minor subdivision director. We have that availability on the 25th.
We do, Council.
And in light of the nature of the application, can we get it higher on the agenda? I know this applicant has been carried multiple times, and the minor subdivision's got to be acted upon in less time than some of the site plans. So I'd like to see it higher up on the agenda.
We can absolutely do that, Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
If anybody in the public is here for either one of those matters, they are carried to the June 25th. There will be no further notice. This is your notice. Mr. Harrington?
Mr. Harrington.
Yes. How are you, Mr. Lampy? I have another adjournment, if I could sneak in here. For the record, Charles Harrington of Confoli. I'm appearing on behalf of Mr. Lean for agenda item number 16, 1725 Perrine Avenue. We'd ask that that be carried as well, and I believe it would be to July 9th would be the two-weeks or two-meeting carry with preservation of notices, and we would waive any time restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Case P2024-0044, 17-25 Perrine Avenue is being carried to July 9th with no further notice required. If anybody in the public is here for that application, it is carried to July 9th. You will have no further notice. This is said notice, so July 9th for 17 to 25 Perrine Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, this time we'll continue with our testimony on case P2023-0095.
Thank you, Madam Chair lady. We've decided to proceed with our planner instead of the civil engineer, who is here and who is available for questions should the board have any questions, along with our traffic engineer, should the board have any question concerning traffic at the site. But I'd like to call Catherine Gregory at this time.
Thank you, Council.
Great. Okay. Yes, I do. Yes, Catherine Gregory, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, last name G-R-E-G-O-R-Y. Business address is 96 Limwood Plaza, number 350 in Fort Lee, New Jersey. Is your license current? Your professional license is current? Yes, I just paid it in May. You're qualified. Thank you.
Ms. Gregory, would you take us through the deviations that are required to approve this application and the reasons for this board to approve the application?
Yes, absolutely. We are here tonight seeking a couple of C or bulk variances associated with this application. As our architect described to you earlier, we do feel that these are really more de minimis in nature because overall, we think that this project advances the goals and purposes of the redevelopment plan. I would say that these variances fall under the C2, which is where the purposes of zoning will be advanced and the benefits are outweighed by the detriment. So I wouldn't say that we have necessarily a hardship located here. So I believe that all the variances will fall under the C2 criteria. The first variance that we need is for the ground-floor non-residential height requirement, which actually also relates to the ground-floor non-residential height requirement within 30 feet of a rear lot line. 15 feet is required for the front, but 12 feet is the max for the back. So that would be a dip in the first level of the structure. And we are asking for 14 foot six across the board. And that is because, as was stated by Mr. Garber, we are seeking to have structured parking within the building, which raises that up in the back to 14 foot six. And obviously, a 14 foot six and a 15 foot in the front is really not too much of a deviation. So we believe that it makes sense to keep everything at 14 foot six. And in the front, that would be a minor deviation. But we think, again, the benefits of providing the parking on-site outweigh the detriments at this location, even though parking is not provided. We also need a variance for the drive aisle width, which was also discussed. 22 feet is required, and 18 feet 3 inches is proposed. That is only at the entrance and exit driveway. I will state that a RSIS parking space is nine foot wide. You can get two cars next to each other passing. The difference here is that it is a very low-volume traffic use. So therefore, if there are cars that are moving in either direction from this parking garage, number one, they're already going to be used to the maneuvers that they need to make in this garage. Number two, they're obviously not going to be driving very quickly. So we believe that there is sufficient space. And also, it should be noted that the backup aisle where the parking is is actually 23 foot 6 inches, which exceeds the width requirement of 22 feet. And so that's really just based on the dimensions of the lot itself. Our architect also talked to you about the encroachment into the required front yard. We are permitted to have 227.52 square feet, and that's on the front of the building, and we are actually proposing 668.75 square feet. However, the encroachment, number one, is only at the upper level, so it doesn't impede the street level. And as he talked about before, when you take a look at the axonometric that happens to be up there, you can see that the front facade of this building is actually really interesting because it kind of undulates. So it almost looks like it's moving. We think that that creates a really interesting design alternative at this location. And lastly, we need a variance for the backup generator location. It's supposed to be located on the interior, but we are proposing it on the second-floor rear deck. We are also proposing that it is going to be surrounded by a sound attenuation screen, so we don't believe that there's going to be any noise impacts. In terms of the positive and negative criteria, I believe that we promote a few of the purposes of the municipal land use law, most namely Purpose A, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. I also believe that we promote Purpose I, which talks about a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. As was stated before, I believe that this is a very interesting design, and we do address the tenants of the redevelopment plan in that design. We also promote Purpose M, which talks about encouraging the coordination of various public and private procedures and activity shaping land development with a view of lessening the costs of such development and to the more efficient use of land. I believe that's what we're doing here, providing that mixed-use building, which is a more efficient use of land in this location. I also believe that under the negative criteria, there's no substantial detriment to the public good by granting the variances that we proposed. We are providing what we believe to be adequate parking on-site. We are providing street trees. We are providing 52 bike parking spaces since we are located... Well, besides the fact that they are required, but we are located in the Journal Square area. And I also believe there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone plan and zoning coordinates. The purpose of the Journal Square 2060 plan is to foster the redevelopment, obviously, of the area by providing for transit-oriented development of new housing, offices, commercial, and public open spaces within walking distances to the square and transit facilities, returning Journal Square to a flourishing central business and shopping destination. I believe that the applicant meets this purpose as a mixed-use development is proposed with new housing, commercial, and office development. I also believe that we promote the following redevelopment plan objectives, which would include number four, which is promote a pattern of mixed and multiple-use development. New buildings within the area should appropriately combine residential, commercial, and entertainment uses and encourage a balance of jobs to housing. Number six, encourage local quality retail within the greater Journal Square area. Number seven, reduce automobile dependency by encouraging high-density development in close proximity to mass transit with low automobile parking ratios and with bicycle parking requirements. We do have a low parking ratio here, and we do have the maximum amount of bicycle parking. Number 12, the overall improvement of traffic circulation through the development of new and improved vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems, which provides separation of vehicular and pedestrian traffic and the maximum use of public transportation. I also say that as the site stood before today, with Mr. Garber's pictures, you can see that there were residences that were located there, and each property had a curb cut, and there were parking spaces that were in front of those homes. And we are eliminating three, and we are providing one. So we believe that that also goes to that purpose of the redevelopment plan. And also, number 23, which is to maximize the use of rooftop open space for recreation and our green roofs. So overall, I believe that the proposed development of the property is an appropriate development that will benefit the immediate neighborhood and the general welfare. It will promote the general welfare by bringing a building into conforming today's fire and safety codes, and the proposed variances will not substantially affect any surrounding properties. And we also, obviously, as I stated, promote the general purpose and several of the redevelopment plan objectives of the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. I have no further questions of this witness if the board has any questions.
Any questions from the board? No, thank you. Okay.
I have the civil engineer and the traffic engineer available for questions. And the event board, the board has any questions?
Does the board have any questions? No, thank you.
Okay. If that's not the case, then that's our case. And we have received the engineering reports, the report dated May 6, 2024, as well as the planner's report. And my client has agreed to be bound by the conditions of both of those documents in the event the approval is given to us.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for public comments. Anyone in the public?
I see no one from the public and make a motion to close all public remarks.
Thank you. Public is closed. Who's our planner? Sophia?
Yes, I agree with the applicant's planner's testimony concerning the variances. The applicant was also asked to provide testimony on the agreement of removal and relocation of utility poles and wires with Verizon. It has been shown that there was communication with Verizon, and it appears there's no conflict. But is there any further comment on that?
As far as I know, today, we reminded Verizon, you know, to come out and do the work, but we're working on that. We'll make sure that's done, and if that's a condition of approval, we accept that as a condition.
Yeah. And planning staff would then just ask that the applicant's attorney agree to the existing conditions outlined in the staff memo dated May 3, 2024.
I'm sorry?
The staff would ask that you agree to the conditions.
Yes. We did.
And planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to vote on approval of case number P2023-0095.
Commissioner Stomato. Take the roll, please.
Roll call, please.
Acting Vice Chair Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadin.
Aye. I think the variance requested here are minimal.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to call on case number 12, P23-032. Preliminary and final major site plan with a condition use and C variances. Address is 791-805 West Side Avenue.
Good evening. Stephen Joseph, attorney for the applicant. This is a notice application. I would ask that you confirm receipt of notice and that they're acceptable.
Thank you, Council. I am to receive the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at 791 through 805 West Side Avenue, as well as 200 Delaware Avenue here in the city. It had been previously noticed for a meeting back in April and carried through to this evening. With preservation of that notice, Madam Chair, it does appear to be in order, so we're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
May I proceed?
Thank you so much. 791 805 West Side Avenue. This is a collection of six properties. It's mid-block on West Side Avenue in the NC Zone. What the applicant's proposing here is a new five-story building, commercial on the ground floor, 84 dwelling units, and 28 parking spaces. In order to accomplish this, we do need preliminary and final major site plan approval and C variances for rear yard setback and a curb cut where no curb cut would be permitted. Will is our architect this evening, and he's going to walk you through the plans. We do have four experts. We're going to reserve testimony on civil and traffic and just have our architect and planner unless there's questions from the board.
Yeah, Council, I think that would be appreciated. Based on what I've reviewed, it does appear to be pretty straightforward, so I think that we can deal with it in that manner.
Absolutely. I agree. Will, let's get you sworn in.
Thank you. Yes, I do. Sure, it's William Weckenman. Last name is spelled W-E-C-K-E-N-M-A-N-N.
Is your professional license current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Bear with me, we're having some technical issues. Okay. There we go. So Stephen mentioned, we're proposing a five-story building for a collection of properties on the west side of West Side Avenue. The property consists of a series of mixed-use buildings as well as a surface parking lot. As you can see from the existing site plan survey, a number of these buildings are located along the rear property line. There's a number of garage buildings and non-conforming structures that exist on the site currently. The site will be cleared entirely, and a new building will be constructed. Before I get into the site plan, I'm just going to quickly shift over to an exhibit that we had prepared.
This was submitted in advance of the hearing. It does not need to be entered as an exhibit.
So a little bit of history here with this project to kind of explain why we're asking for the variances that we are asking for with regards to the bulk standards. The original iteration of this project was a square-shaped building that occupied the maximum permitted footprint on the site. It was sort of a circular building with a donut cut out in the middle. But it was sort of a less-than-ideal configuration, and we felt it was not particularly appropriate for this site. So for comparison purposes, you can see here, this is the proposed building footprint. And the strategy that we employed here is we shifted the building from a square-shaped building to an L-shaped building, and we actually increased the rear yard setback for the vast majority of the property. So because of that, we shifted some of this bulk and volume to the rear of the property. We oriented the building the way we did, specifically because there are a number of buildings that are deeper, a number of multifamily buildings that have a larger footprint on this section of the block. And we tried to open up the center of the property, which backs up to some of the smaller one- and two-family dwellings that are on the opposite side of the block on Duncan Avenue. So this is just, again, just to explain kind of how we shifted the bulk of the building around on the property to take advantage of some of the site conditions. Moving on to the site plan, we are proposing a repaving of West Side Avenue along with a new sidewalk. We are eliminating one of the two curb cuts that currently exist on West Side Avenue. We're also asking for a variance for a curb cut on this property where one would not be permitted. Again, the building is a five-story building. We have a large roof deck that is at the center of the roof. Again, we shifted it towards West Side Avenue and away from some of the residential properties to the rear. We also have a large rear yard that we have landscaped and are providing some outdoor amenity spaces in the backyard for residence use. I'll just skip through. These are just our standard site details. We are providing parking within the building. We have a full cellar level below the building with 28 parking spaces. We also have our utility spaces and a fitness center at this level of the building. Moving on to the ground floor, fronting West Side Avenue, we have two large commercial spaces, as well as the entrance to the parking garage at the south end of the building. We also have ground-floor residential use in this building, which is a conditional use, and those units are located at the rear and the side of the building, opening up to the rear yard. The second and third floor plan is a little bit different from the typical floor plan in that we have some roof decks for the rear-facing units. The upper floors have balconies. rear-facing units. The upper floors have balconies. Um, other than that, floors two through five are identical in terms of the layout and the configuration of the apartments. I previously spoke about the, the roof deck, um, which, again, is located towards the center of the roof away from, uh, away from the rear of the property. Um, the building is quite long, so, uh, our strategy here was to break up the volume of the building, um, through the use of, uh, corrugated metal as an accent material that, that, uh, highlights the, the building entry. Um, it, it, it breaks the building up into two, two smaller volumes. Um, and we also have, uh, these oversized punched openings which further help to, um, add interest to the facade and, and break down the scale, uh, uh, a little bit further. The rear elevation, which is at the bottom of the screen, is, is a little bit simpler. The, the same punched opening idea is carried around to the back of the building, but we are using, um, uh, uh, lap siding for the primary facade material on the, on the rear of the building. That design is carried around to the sides as well. Um, portions of the building are up against the adjoining structures, which you can see here are these hatched areas of the plan. Um, on one elevation, we are proposing stucco, but the, uh, lap siding, um, does, does carry around to the side elevations. So, the, the rear and the sides are, are fairly consistent design. Here, we just have, um, enlarged elevations of the, the first floor as well as the typical, uh, residential floor. Um, you'll notice that some of the, the units on the front of the building have, do have balconies. These are recessed balconies into the facade. They don't, they don't project out over the street at all. Um, so I, I just wanna mention that as well. Uh, these, these are, uh, the materials that we've, we've selected for the project. Um, we're, we're using a, a gray, a light gray brick as the, the primary facade material and as I mentioned, uh, a corrugated metal and aluminum panel as a, as the accent material for storefront and the, um, section of the, the building that, um, is, is recessed on the primary facade. Here we have our, our shadow study. Um, again, it's fairly straightforward analysis. Happy to answer any questions on this specifically, but I won't go into too much detail. And then finally, we have, um, our proposed, uh, rendering of the, of the, uh, front facade. Want to mention the other rendering or... So, that, uh, that concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we're gonna bring up our, uh, planner. Let's, uh, let's get you sworn in.
Yes, I do. Thomas Ricci. Last name is spelled R-I-C-C-I. I'm not. Same field, same last name.
Uh, your license is currently good standing this evening?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. License is active.
You're qualified.
Um, so you've heard the testimony about the proposed use and the proposed structure. Uh, this is a property in the NC, the neighborhood commercial district zone. Um, now the goal of this zone is to provide, uh, ground floor commercial in mixed-use buildings and to promote walkability. So, we're doing all three of those things. We have a mixed-use structure here, residential with commercial on the ground floor. Obviously, the two uses make it a mixed-use building and then the building being located along this street front and connecting to the two buildings on the side create that continuous, um, you know, street, uh, building facade along West Side Ave. Uh, so in my opinion, the project's substantially consistent with, uh, the vision for this zone and this site. Um, it's permitted use. Um, it's permitted in terms of height. I think it's, it's exactly what the, the NC Zone has envisioned for this property. Um, we are seeking some minor relief items, but as I briefly get into my testimony, I think you'll find that the relief is actually, it's either going to provide a benefit for the community or it's going to be improving what's out there now or, or some of these variances, even both of those things. Um, so starting with the rear yard setback, I think, uh, Will did a great job mentioning what the design intent was, um, for this building and how it relates to the setbacks. Um, and, and what he mentioned was it's actually an improvement over the existing condition. Now, the existing building, it's anywhere from zero feet to about one and a half feet on that rear property line. Um, we're three point six feet off of that. We're eighteen point six feet is required. Um, so it is an improvement. It's peeling it back a couple feet. Uh, it's not significant, but it is an improvement over the existing condition. Um, I just wanna make note that it's not three point six feet for the entirety of the lot. That's the pinch point. That's the worst point. Um, where the building actually does abut that rear property line, it tapers to about seven feet. Um, so once again, an improvement of about six feet, uh, on that other end. Um, and now the building only abuts that rear property line for about half the property. As Will showed you, it's an L shape, so the other side is open. That, where the building, um, the closest point of the building on the other side, where it meets that property line, is closer to fifty, fifty-five feet. So, that side is actually three times compliant. And I think that was, as, as we mentioned, was, was kind of the design intent, um, to provide that outdoor courtyard, that basically square of space where there's no building, um, to provide that outdoor amenity space for residents. And I think it's good too because it kinda, it provides that natural buffer, that area where there is no building, um, and, and basically separates us from other buildings in that area. It's kind of in the middle of the block. So, moving on to curb cuts, um, curb cuts are prohibited on West Side Avenue. Um, now we are proposing one curb cut. Now, two exists out there now. Um, so for what it's worth, the removal of one, you're gonna be able to add an on-street, you know, parking space in that area where there formerly was a curb cut. Um, so this is an improvement, but we are providing a curb cut for two reasons. Obviously, we have, well, we're providing it because we're providing parking, um, underneath the building for, um, the residents inside the building. But not only is that gonna be beneficial to the residents, I think that having the parking, um, or the applicant feels that having the parking on this site is gonna help alleviate some of the burden of the on-street parking for the surrounding residents too. So, we think that removal of one curb cut and just keeping the one and providing the parking onsite is gonna be a win-win for people both in this building and people in this, um, neighborhood. Um, with regards to street trees, now this is a waiver. Seven are required. Um, they're required for all development projects. Uh, one tree is required for every twenty-five feet, uh, linear feet of frontage, and we have a hundred and sixty feet on West Side Ave. So, we're required seven trees. Um, now we only propose four, and the reason is that's all we can fit in the right of way. Um, I took a look at the survey and the proposed site plans, uh, and with regards to some of the utility infrastructure, I saw that there was a light pole, a relocated utility pole. There's an area in the middle of the site that we're reserving for a bus stop area for people to be able to actually access, to step off the sidewalk and curb and get onto the bus stop. There was another light pole and then there was a fire hydrant. So, um, you know, we see this sometimes when the engineering part actually comes into play. It becomes just unfeasible to get the full seven trees, but we think the four, um, you know, fits in nicely in between some of that utility infrastructure and still meets the intent of having this green, this street, um, trees along the frontage. Uh, lastly, we're seeking relief for the lighting at the property line. Now, a maximum of point five-foot candles is what's permitted. Uh, we have on our plans twenty-three point one foot candles is proposed. It sounds like a major increase. I wanna state for the record, that's not, there's gonna be no spillover of lighting on the side property lines and the rear property line. Now, that twenty-three comes into play at the point where the building is actually fronting on the sidewalk, and it's because that's where the entrances of the building is. Um, there's recessed lighting up on the ceiling, uh, when you, uh, go under the awning of the building, so it shines down. It doesn't shine out, but it crosses that front property line because it's lighting the sidewalk. Um, there's no spillover into the roadway, so there shouldn't be any impacts there. And once again, this is, this lighting's doing its job. It's supposed to have a well-lit entrance, um, at the building frontage, kind of inviting and from a safety and security standpoint. So, that, that sums up the relief. Uh, really, as I mentioned, the, the setbacks for, uh, the relief requested for this, the rear setback and the curb cut, we actually think is a benefit for both the residents and the smout, surrounding, um, residents because they're both improvements. Uh, with regards to the street trees, as I mentioned, we don't really have control over that, but that one's an improvement too. There's one street tree out there now and we're proposing four. Um, and then same thing with the lighting. Uh, goes along with that security and, and safety concern, you know, you have a new building, you have lighting, of course, on the entrances. Um, so that was triggered more, uh, via a technicality. Um, so, so I think the relief, I, I, as I mentioned, I think there's more benefits than there are, uh, detriments to the surrounding community with the grant of these variances, which why I think it could be granted under the C2 criteria, um, with the positives substantially outweighing the detriments. Um, as I mentioned, I think that this is exactly what the size, um, and type of use was envisioned for the NC Zone. It's a nearly compliant plan. Um, and then speaking more on a, a broader planning scope, uh, with regards to the master plan, um, it recognizes that most businesses in Jersey City are small. Um, I like that they recognize that. I think that's what makes Jersey City so unique and that's why we have, um, that's why the zoning ordinance, I think, contemplates having this mixed use, um, these smaller commercial tenants in which they typically are under residential properties, um, like this. So, we're continuing to encourage that type of, uh, uh, you know, business and economic activity, uh, in this neighborhood. They talk about, um, improving conditions for cyclists, um, and that's a high priority, always has been for Jersey City. We do have the bike storage component of this. I think that goes along with the walkability component too. People walking and biking to these, uh, neighborhood uses, the mixing of uses in this area. Um, and then lastly, one more thing I wanna touch on. Um, one of the goals is to celebrate and beautify the public realm. Um, specifically, they talk about, uh, streetscape improvements and lighting improvements, and I think, as I've touched on with the trees and the lighting along the streetscape, uh, we've, we've done that. We've, we've embodied that, that goal. It's this nice, um, new, new building, um, continuous street front that's gonna connect into other buildings, um, and just the public improvements that I think not only serve the people in this building, but the neighborhood as a whole, which is, I think, what the goal of, of this zoning is intended to do. Um, so to sum up, as I mentioned, I think this could be granted under the C2 benefits versus detriments criteria, uh, and I think it's a, it's a great project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, that does conclude our direct testimony. Um, we do have a traffic engineer, a civil engineer, um, uh, that are available.
Counsel, did you receive the director's memo?
Uh, I did.
Did you read it?
I, I did.
Okay.
Uh, we don't, we don't have sample materials available.
I gathered that.
Yeah.
Did you wanna have anybody address her comments and concerns in that first paragraph about?
Staff.
Uh, we do have a, uh, updated rendering that we could show the board as an exhibit. So, Will, if you wanna come up and show, uh...
I'm gonna mark that as A2.
Yes, please.
Are you able to see that, Director? I can see it on my screen.
Yeah, so we, we did prepare an updated rendering. We're, we're not proposing brick. Um, it's something the applicant does feel strongly about. Um, the materials are, are permitted. Um, if it's something the, the board feels strongly about, about, it's, we can, we can revise that.
So, you are proposing brick in this rendering?
We are not.
This is, this is, yes.
Sorry, Will. Go ahead.
It's, it, it is brick, yes. My, my testimony from before was consistent with this rendering.
So, this rendering removes the Juliet balconies or no?
No.
It's converted the other balconies to Juliet balconies?
They, they are...
Why don't you tell us what's going on with the rendering?
Yeah.
There are, uh, there are actual balconies on the, the facade of the building. They are not Juliet balconies or French balconies. They are, uh, three-foot balconies that are recessed into the building facade.
I think the director memo was very clear and it states, "This include the use of siding and panels instead of brick and metals. Additionally, Juliet balconies along the West Side Avenue elevation should be removed and those openings should be restored to window openings."
It was pretty clear, Chairwoman, and fortunately, we have the director here this evening.
Yeah.
But, okay. Any further testimony, counsel?
Revising it? I think we'd have to confirm with the client on that.
Um, we don't, we don't have any further testimony this evening. If, i- i- if this is something the board and the director do feel strongly about, we could, uh, we, we can revise the, the materials.
Certainly.
Yeah.
We have to go with the staff recommendation and the memo was pretty clear.
Understood. Um, uh, so that's something we'd have to revise and, and come back to the board with.
So, it's pretty clear to me what the requested changes are, that the balconies be converted to windows and that the material be changed from brick to some kind of siding and panels. Director, you're on the dais. Am I, am I misreading your words on the paper?
You are not. I have, um, absolutely, uh, nothing against Mr. Weckman's, uh, design. Uh, it is just the intention to have it, um, complement the rest of the neighborhood. And I know that it's a little sparse, but it's actually a really pretty consistent, um, materiality on the block. Um, and it is a variety of siding, um, and panels. Um, so that is the request that it match with the neighborhood. It's pretty consistent with everything that we're doing, all the other zoning.
So, I guess instead of the brick, that would be the siding, instead of the, uh, I guess, metal paneling, that would be some other material?
Yep. I, I mean, those are my general, like, observations about it. I think if there was a proposal, I think there would be more comments about it, so we can kind of work that out. If the board wants to see it or the board wants to delegate that to staff, we're fine either way.
So, I think materials could be delegated, the balconies converted to... Window, I, I guess those would be floor-to-ceiling windows would be what we're talking about, so if...
If we're able to agree as a condition, we'd, we'd be happy to do that and work with staff on those changes.
Yeah, otherwise, you're gonna have to submit it and sit through another one of these.
Understood. So, i- if we are able to do that, we'd, we'd be happy to agree as a condition.
If staff is okay with that.
We are.
The staff's recommendation?
Okay.
We do have to open to public.
Anyone here from the public?
Sergio, S-E-R-G-I-O, Stifelman, S-T as in Tom, I-F-E-L-M-A-N. 419 Fairmont Avenue.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Am I on the clock already?
No, not yet.
I'm sorry.
Not yet. You're not on the clock as yet.
We said you have three minutes, sir, and we have not started the clock yet.
Okay, sorry. I didn't understand.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, sir.
I'm ready.
Okay.
You know, I live about 100 yards from, on Fairmont from West Side Avenue. And I've told Mr. Joseph several times that I strongly oppose this building. I'm not going to ask you to reject because it would be totally foolish. In fact, there is another building, a sibling, a twin building diagonally across. These are two buildings. They cover what amounts to the whole block between Duncan and Fairmont. We're talking about, what, 168 new residential units, both buildings? We're talking about this one, but, and this is exactly the problem. Altogether, there are going to be 168 units and 56 parking spaces for a block that has very, very few residential units. The fact that there is a building diagonally across, there is several buildings being built, like what, if you consider that position, like the center of the sphere, I think if you, on a ratio of, what, 200 yards west, you have like six, seven buildings going up, and two north. So at what point, right, the negative criteria doesn't apply, right? I mean, variance won't cause substantial detriment to the public good. Well, one building won, but 50? Well, then it becomes a problem, you know? I'm not going to, I appreciate Mr. Alompi stressing what's the task of this board. He did this last time I was here with the building, that 77 unit that grew up with, that's growing up, is being erected next to the church. The problem is that the buck stops review, and the public's extremely frustrated with, this is a real estate invasion. This is a political decision that unfortunately you have to handle in legal terms. That's why when the public comes here, they complain. They can argue in a different way. And I think Mr. Alompi is correct. I mean, he said last time, he said, yeah, this is what we do. We don't make the law. Well, so my suggestion, okay, it's not going to go anywhere, but I'll say this. The chapter 345 of the zoning provisions, right, the general provisions, the fundamental law of that to which every other law has to, with whichever other law has to comply with says clearly. The purpose of this chapter is to plan and guide appropriate use. You know, I don't have time, but to provide establishment, to encourage location, whatever. There's like, here it is. To provide within community resources for the future housing needs of citizens of Jersey City. This is not for the citizens of Jersey City. This is for outsiders. In other words, what this chapter says is that we have to be, this chapter is not being respected. I don't expect you to change anything, but it's like an unconstitutional, the master plan is an unconstitutional law, is not consistent with the basic provisions of the law. I don't expect anything from you, but this is absolutely.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none.
I see no one else who's here to speak from the public, and I make a motion to close the public section.
Public is closed. Tanya?
Sure. I would say that on the conditions in the staff memo, I would just alter number one to say that the applicant can work with staff to come up with a facade, at least, that's more traditional and matching with the surrounding neighborhood. And that would just have to be done before any signature plans were signed. So the signature plans then kind of kicks in their traditional condition that says, any changes that are made to that, you have to let us know. And if we do require an amendment, we'll take that at the time. And then, of course, all testimony given by the applicant and the witness shall be binding. I have spoken to the, I will not need number three because I've spoken to the review agents, and I've also spoken to transportation planning, and everything was addressed. Again, installing the trees prior to any kind of CO, DCO, or CO. We've been continuing to do this affidavit, confirming the development is built in accordance, and the memorialized resolution be recorded with the county. And of course, number seven, which is just the owners comply with all the conditions and approvals set forth.
In addition to those conditions, we, in working with the community, we also agreed to do bird-safe glass on the building and to provide landscaping and additional landscaping in the rear yard, which we're accomplishing with a row of trees at the rear yard line.
Okay.
So I would add those as well. And the applicant accepts all those conditions.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to vote to approve case number P23-032 for approval.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll for the director. Acting Vice Chair Darlene Green?
So we are voting on, will these conditions be, like you're saying that you're going to put these conditions in?
Yep, the applicant accepts all these conditions.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gunkadon.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All in favor to approve.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, what do you want to do?
Yeah, one more?
Yeah, one more?
It's ten.
Mr. Harrington, off the record.
Yes.
We normally don't open any new cases at past 10, but for this one, we'll make an exception for Mr. Harrington. I'd like to call in case P2023-0064. It's preliminary and final major site plan with C variants, addresses 147 Academy Street.
Okay.
Mr. Harrington.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it from the board. For the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a very straightforward application. It was approved in 2016 through COVID and the extensions. It was carried through, like, 2023. That initial approval has since expired. So what we are proposing before you tonight has essentially been approved, but we have a new architect. There are new construction codes, so we're tweaking it a little bit. So that's going to be presented to you. We have similar variances that were approved on the initial application, and I think one additional one. It's, well, I'm just going to get out of the way here. I'm going to have two witnesses as our architect and our planner. Our civil engineer is here. In the event you have any questions, it's located at the corner of Academy and Gray Street, and a little bit of a slope. And just after the record, it's also in the Pea Pod District, as this board is aware of that. None of the items are triggered here, so we provided all the reports that were required, and they're part of the record, but none of that is relevant to what's before you as far as setbacks or anything to that effect. So with that, I'm going to get out of the way and bring up our architect.
Mr. Harrington, for purpose of the record, I am going to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. Does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Sure. Stuart Johnson, S-T-U, A-R-T, last name Johnson, J-H-N-S-O.
That's all now.
Okay. Is your professional license current?
It is. I am a registered architect with a current license. I've appeared before this board numerous times.
You're qualified. You can go ahead.
So good evening, everyone. As Mr. Harrington, I noted, this project did receive prior approvals for a eight-story mixed-use building consisting of 66 dwelling units. And it did have several variances or deviations associated with it, associated with the prior approval. This is a new application, but it is substantially similar in many ways to the prior application. The site is located at the corner of Academy Street and Gray Street. Specifically, there's approximately 73 feet of frontage along Academy Street and 51 feet of frontage along Gray Street. The lot area is about 5,079 square feet. The existing condition of the lot is an existing surface parking lot. One point to note is the sloping nature of the site. The site does slope significantly from Gray Street down to the intersection. The low point of the site is at the intersection of Academy and Gray Street. So the average grade plane of the site, the average finished grade plane of the site, is approximately 2.7 feet higher than the finished floor elevation of the site. So that gives you a sense of some of the sloping conditions that we're dealing with. The application being considered before the board this evening is a new eight-story building consisting of 69 residential apartment units, so that's three additional apartment units from that which was previously approved. We are seeking a few deviations, and our planners here this evening, who will speak about that, I'm going to highlight those quickly here, but the deviations that are being sought associated with this application is the required ground floor commercial space. So with the new application, in review of new building code updates and review to some of the accessibility and egress requirements associated with the new building, as well as the challenge of ground floor commercial retail, we are not proposing ground floor commercial retail in the building, but I'll walk you through the building plan. I do believe we're meeting the intent of the requirement in the code of activation of the ground floor of the building with new storefront windows. We're also seeking a deviation associated with the minimum sidewalk width. And again, our planner will speak to that. We are seeking a deviation associated with the building height. And again, I had noted that the site topography on the site, the average, the finished average grade elevation is approximately 2.7 feet higher than the finished floor elevation of the building. And we're also seeking a deviation associated with the minimum ground floor, non-residential ceiling heights. We are proposing 10 feet is the minimum height, which is technically a requirement associated with the transformer vault room that we're designing on the ground floor of the building. And then lastly, one point to note, the application does eliminate a side yard variance that the prior approved plan had. So with that, I'll walk you through the building plans, and I'll try and keep it concise. But of Exhibit A1, which is the architectural site plan presentation, Sheet A1 is the ground floor plan. The ground floor plan is essentially very similar to the prior plan, very close to 100% lock coverage here. The primary residential lobby is located here with an interior vestibule. Along the frontage along Academy Street, we have new storefront windows that activate the streetscape, meeting the intent of providing ground floor retail here, right, to activate the human realm and the pedestrian realm of the building. As we turn the corner on Gray Street, we have an internal transformer vault room. The prior application did not have adequate mechanical space for an internal transformer vault room to provide electrical service for the building. So this complies with PSCNG requirements here, a 10-by-15-foot room. We also have an internal trash and refuse termination room that provides direct access out to the street. Trash recycling are stored internally to the building. Prior application had commercial retail in this location, but architecturally, in my opinion, didn't have adequate trash and refuse termination that allowed for direct access to the street without going through an egress corridor. So that has been included in the building. Also on the ground floor, we have a lobby lounge area with co-working space, as well as adequate space here for domestic fire service sprinkler rooms and a bicycle room that accommodates 35 bicycle parking spaces. As we move vertically in the building, this is the typical second through seventh floor of the building. We have approximately 10 units per floor. The revised unit distribution is 68 studios in one three-bedroom unit. The prior application had 48 studios, 17 one-bedroom units in one three-bedroom unit. So very similar with the unit mix in regards to the studios and one-bedroom units, both being a single occupancy units. Average unit sizes have increased slightly from the prior application. And then, as we move vertically in the building to the rooftop, we are providing a rooftop amenity deck space with a small indoor area, indoor residential amenity area that complies with the LDO and the redevelopment plan. It allows for passive recreation there and smart use of the upper roof level of the building. And the last point to note, we are providing some green roof area at the roof bulkhead, as well as the upper rooftop mechanical bulkhead of the building. So smart planning, design principles, also site stormwater design that was included in our engineering application and report. So with that being said, I'll walk you through the exterior elevation. But firstly, I wanted to remind the board of the prior application that was approved. This is an illustrative rendering that was produced by Grow Architects, the prior architect with the prior application. Again, as noted, it was an eight-story building with 66 residential apartment units and ground floor retail. Fast forward, this is the proposed exterior elevation design for the building. This is a view looking from Academy Street at the corner of Academy and Gray. We have increased the size of the residential apartment units. We saw on the prior rendering sort of single windows that were approximately three feet wide. These are much wider, closer to wall-to-wall glass in the studio apartment units, allowing for greater light and air for those residential apartment units, bringing glass down to the floor line. The ground floor of the building has been designed with a masonry brick veneer. It's a slurry gray brick. I have a physical sample with me here in my bag. We also submitted a digital material sample board. We're proposing on floors two through seven, two different vertical fiber cement panels. There's a darker iron gray and a medium gray, a pearl gray here with reveal joints that provides subtle accent. And then on the upper level of the building at the eighth floor, we have a composite metal panel, which is a patinaed or pre-patinaed sort of copper look, but it's a composite panel or, you know, ACM panel there that provides an accent. You can see that.
So were these submitted on the portal?
They were submitted as part of the site plan application. This is the visual impact assessment. This is a rendering from the visual impact assessment.
Okay.
If we could, for the record, just mark this slide deck as A2.
All right. Well, mark the deck then as A2. I've got it showing as eight out of 15.
Sheet A8 out of 15, that's correct. Yep. And drawing number eight, this is, this was View A of the visual impact assessment that, to my knowledge, was filed and submitted as part of the application.
No issue. Counsel, can we go to, I mean, I think the renderings and the drawings kind of speak for themselves. I want to hear about the deviation, why we've got the Florida heights that don't comply, obviously.
Sure.
I guess bulkhead we're talking about towards overall height.
So maybe I'll hit that quickly, but, so we think it's a well-designed building. Again, larger windows, exterior building materials, a little more comprehensive design. This is the front elevation of the building. We are providing two signs for the building, a canopy sign and a wall sign there that both comply. So in regards to the height of the building, it's twofold. One is, again, the average grade of the building. The finished average grade elevation is 2.7 feet higher than that of the lobby, so where we're actually calculating the height of the building. the height of the building from. We've also redesigned the building here so that the building could be constructed out of light gauge steel construction as opposed to the prior application. It was designed to be a flat plate concrete building. So the floor-to-floor, the composite bar joint system is thicker, it's deeper than that of a cast-to-place concrete building. So that also added several inches at each floor, which, which, which all add up. So the building as shown is eight stories. Technically, the building height here is a little over ninety feet, where eighty-five feet is permitted. In regards to the massing and the height of the building, as we look at in the rendering, it's an eight-story building. It's very similar in scale to that, which was previously approved. And we are seeking a deviation again for the ground floor ceiling height, for the, the minimum required ground floor ceiling height. We have ten feet at the mechanical transformer vault room, which is a requirement by P C and G, so we're limited by that. And again, we can see here that our floor-to-floor height is twelve feet, ten inches at that first floor. We do have large exterior storefront windows, which again, we believe we're meeting the intent of that by providing an active facade, activated facade, right, with elegant storefront windows. But our planner's here, and he can speak a little bit more about the proofs regarding the deviations.
Any questions for the architect? Well, we, we did submit a principal point statement as part of the record, so we can, you know, rely upon that as part of the record, unless the, the board has any questions for Mr. Bellamy.
Yes.
And that concludes our presentation. And we have reviewed the review agent comment letters, and we agree to comply and address all their comments. And we also have reviewed Mr. Black's review letter, and we will agree to his conditions of approval.
Yeah. I just wanted to add one point about the sidewalk width.
Okay.
I think I had noted earlier in the deviations regarding the minimum sidewalk width, but we were seeking a deviation associated with, we're required to provide a twelve-foot sidewalk width. And at both Academy and Gray Street, we have an eleven-foot sidewalk width, where the minimum sidewalk width is twelve feet. Again, we comply with minimum clearance that is required by engineering there in regards to the minimum clear width. But there are challenges there just in regards to where the right-of-way line is relative to the curb line. But again, we don't see any negative impacts associated with that.
And, and the sidewalk is meeting an existing condition on, on the building next door, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. This is a corner lot, right, counsel? That's right.
It is.
Right. I think we gotta open the public.
Anyone from the public?
I see no one here from the public, and I make a motion to close the public section.
Public is closed?
Planning staff just wants to add that the original application that was approved in twenty sixteen had six variances. This one has four variances. The variances that were previously approved are existing here, and the only changes really is just in the unit count and the distribution of the studios, which is outnumbering, actually replacing the single bedrooms. But planning staff agrees with the testimony regarding the variances and the applicant's professional opinion on the negative criteria for the variances, and planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to vote and approve of case number P two zero two three dash zero zero six four.
On a motion to approve, Acting Vice Chair Darlene Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadin.
I think the variances requested here is very minimal, and it's no detriment to the master plan. My vote is aye.
Motion carries. All in favor with conditions?
Okay, thank you again for hearing us at the late hour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
At this time, I have seven resolutions, and I'll read them out. You must be tired. Okay, resolution of the city of the, Jersey City Planning Board, resolution of the city Planning Board, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero four seven, applicant three seven T Princeton LLC, address three seven zero Princeton Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two eight nine zero four, lots twelve and thirteen, decided on May seven, twenty twenty-four, memorialized on June eleven, twenty twenty-four, applicant for time extension. Resolution, City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P two three dash zero nine four, applicant forty Lembeck, Jersey City LLC, forty Lembeck Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two nine five zero four, lot thirty-six, decided on Tuesday, May seven, twenty twenty-four, memorialized on June eleven, twenty twenty-four, applicant for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for applicant twenty-nine Van Reipen LLC for termination, withdrawal of a preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviation at twenty-one dash twenty-nine Van Reipen Avenue, block seven nine zero four, lots one and two, case number P two zero dash one six five. Resolution of Planning Board of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, New Jersey, recommendation that a portion of scatter site study area five be designated as a conanniation area in need of redevelopment. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, section thirty-one, review submitted by University Academy Charter School, two seventy-five West Side Avenue, block two two one zero, lot fifteen, case number P two zero two four dash zero zero four three. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant Academy Partners MW LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviation one ninety-one dash one ninety-three Academy Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one two three zero eight, lots six and seven, case number P two two dash one eight seven. Final resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, case number P two zero two three dash zero zero eight two for preliminary and final major site plan with seed variance, applicant Cottage Realty Development LLC, address is six eighty-one and six eighty-three dash six eighty-five Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block seven nine zero two, lots thirty-three and thirty-four. Can I have a second?
On a motion to memorialize the resolutions, Acting Vice Chair Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Stomato. And Acting Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Motion carries, memorializing the resolutions.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Survived another one.
All done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.